Okay, we are going to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. Will the clerk please call the roll? John?
I sure will. Dr. Deborah Feenster.
Here.
Veronica Frankel, absent.
I think she's on the phone.
I thought I am, she was.
Both of them.
Two at the same time? Hmm.
Hello? Anyone on the phone?
Hello?
Okay, Veronica, you're here?
I'm here.
There's Angie. Oh, okay, that's Veronica.
Oh.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, Veronica, it's Angie.
Okay.
Hey, are you calling in too?
I am.
And we all hear you.
Do you hear me back?
Okay.
No, I'm hearing you.
Katie Simon-Holland.
I thought I heard Katie.
Scott Kelly.
No, I'm hearing nothing.
JJ, could you call them and tell them that we can hear everything?
I thought I started to hear Katie, but then I heard you. I heard a beep and then you were there. Oh, I hope I didn't disconnect you.
Okay.
They would tell us so, right?
We're trying to tell you.
I texted JJ.
That's funny. Okay.
Okay, John Mayer here. Melina Raymond.
There was no legal meaning, so sometimes you come in late.
Can you turn them down or turn the sound down?
I guess she's present.
Yep, she's present, right?
Hey, how are you doing?
Yeah, get that.
And our student representative, Ms. Champion.
Nayala.
A champion with the last name Champion.
That's right.
It's so nice to have you with us today.
We welcome you. And of course, the board members recognize Nayala from having participated in our community budget forum, so a really great representative of the students, so thanks for being here. And she's a student at Reed. Okay, we have a quorum. Nayala, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Champion. Appreciate that. Okay, JJ, do you want to go to public comment or do you want to try to see if we can connect them? Where are you in that process?
Angie and Veronica, can you hear us?
I'm here.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, good. We wanted you to be able to hear everything in public comment. Okay, let's call for public comment.
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, welcome.
Thank you. My name is John Appolito. I'm with Protect Nevada Children. There's about 1,000 of us and you can find us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. There's very little upside and incredible amount of downside to the increasing screen time, social media, and video game exposure to young students. And that is exactly what the district is doing by providing one-to-one devices to children and/or asking them to spend more and more screen time doing homework. Silicon Valley is well aware of the downside of technology and screen time for students. I've given you a bunch of articles. Here's a handful that I'm going to talk about right now. Washington Post article titled "Melinda Gates: I Spent My Career in Technology; I Wasn't Prepared for Its Effects on My Kids." Business Week title "Bill Gates and Steve Jobs Raised Their Kids Tech-Free and It Should Have Been a Red Flag." New York Times, last month, quote, "Two studies that look at race have found that white children are exposed to screens significantly less than children of color," end quote. NPR story, title "More Screen Time for Teens Linked to ADHD Symptoms." Psychology Today, quote, "Children with autism are uniquely vulnerable to various brain-related impacts of screen time," end quote. Association for Psychological Science, their study, the title is, quote, "Increases in Depressive Symptoms, Suicide-Related Outcomes, and Suicide Rates Among U.S. Adolescents After 2010 and Links to Increased New Media Screen Time." Market Watch article, title "Screens Are Hooking Kids on Digital Heroin." New York Post article, title "Kids Turn Violent as Parents Battle Digital Heroin Addiction." The Guardian article, title "Children Are Tech Addicts and Schools Are the Pushers." New York Times, last month, title "A Dark Consensus About Screens and Kids Begins to Emerge in Silicon Valley." Not only is the district enabling students to fall prey to the downsides of screen time, social media, and video games by giving them one-to-one devices, the district is taking it one step further by pressuring students to increase their screen time for quote-unquote "educational purposes" without first educating parents on all aspects of screen time and technology use in general. President Simon-Holland keeps telling us we are listening, but to date, Protect Nevada has children, Protect Nevada Children has seen no proof you are hearing us.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
Randy Canale.
Good afternoon. Can you pronounce your last name for us?
Yes, thank you. For the board, for the record, my name is Randy Canale.
Canale, great. Thank you, Mr. Canale.
And I'm training coordinator for the Pipe Trades Apprenticeship and I'm president of the Northern Nevada Association of Apprenticeship Coordinators, or Apprenticeship Coordinators Association. I'm here, good afternoon. Once again, I'm here and I appreciate the ability to speak on behalf and we're also here to celebrate National Apprenticeship Week once again. A packet was given to each of the board members describing the building and construction trades apprenticeship programs. These represent 11 different trades and for those who did not have one, I'd like to read from some of the paperwork that was given to the board members. This event, through this event, we're inviting elected officials along with business and industry personnel to visit joint apprenticeship training centers, see what centers have to offer, and why apprenticeship has earned the name of the other four-year degree. These apprenticeship programs are targeting advanced construction jobs for advanced manufacturing and businesses which are coming to our area. We are not an alternative to college. These programs are all affiliated with Truckee Meadows Community College and we are involved in their certificate programs. And many of the programs, when you actually leave, you do have an associate's degree in construction and apprenticeship construction. Nearly nine out of 10 apprentices are employed after finishing their apprenticeship. They have the ability to earn while they learn rather than being in the hole at the end of the program where you normally pay for college and you come out and you're in an entry-level position. Instead, you have been paid many times, the amount of money made through an apprenticeship program is in excess of $200,000 of what our apprentices make. They start at anywhere from $11 to $21 an hour plus full benefits that include health care and retirement funds that they are paying into and annuities that they will have when they turn out. One of the benefits of apprenticeship includes helping to recruit and develop a highly skilled workforce, which we need to do these programs and to put in for the construction that is coming into this area. For the U.S. Department of Labor, for every dollar spent on apprenticeship, employers usually get $1.50 minimum back on return on investment. Came in here at this time last year pushing to have our voices at all schools and not just CTE classes. We did seminars this past summer set up by Dr. Dana Ryan in which teachers and counselors from Sparks and McQueen High School were given both tour of Tesla manufacturing plant and then given a seminar on our programs at the Laborers Training Center. This was immensely well-received. Since then, we've been requested to do several appearances at McQueen High School and we've done them at Sparks. We're not done yet. We want to make sure that we get into all the schools and have an opportunity to present our programs to all the people. I run out of time, but thank you very much.
Mr. Canale, thank you so much for what you and all of the folks involved in the apprenticeship programs do. It was great to see you all at the Career Exploration Day with 5,000 eighth graders and we very much appreciate it. And Mr. Mayer and I want to ask if there's an upper age limit on going into an apprenticeship program?
Actually, there is not. We have, one of our current apprentices, I kid you not, we have a second-year apprentice who is currently 61 years old.
That's great. Awesome. There's hope for us, Mr. Mayer.
So there's hope for all ages. And not only there, we were at Construction Career Day as well when we had over 1,200 students go through for Construction Career Day and all of our programs participated in that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all that you do to make our students have great opportunities.
Kyle Dalby.
Dr. Dalby, welcome.
How are you? Thank you, Kyle Dalby, for the record, Dean of Technical Sciences at Truckee Meadows Community College. Following up with Mr. Canale to talk a little bit about apprenticeships, happy apprenticeship week. I serve on the State Apprenticeship Council. I also serve on the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association. And a lot has been said. We also have some apprentices here, so I won't take up too much time. But we do provide degree and certificate credit opportunities for apprentices in the programs that were mentioned by the last speaker so that they can get out. The apprenticeship programs and the students that go through them, I think they're the rock stars because they'll go through a five-year program. If they finish our-
Thank you. Have a good day, too.
Sorry.
You're welcome. Okay. So if you, as they go through our program, if they do it right, they finish a certificate and/or a degree, then they're set pretty much for when, five years, 10 years down the road, that degree or certificate comes in handy and they're not just working, they might be looking at a management position. I also serve as the lead on the U.S. Department of Labor apprenticeship grant that is working with incumbent workers to have them come back and retrain. Both of these programs at the college, from what I'm seeing, are up hundreds of students in the last couple of years and that's the resurgence of the economy. And so we stand here to help everyone train regardless of the age. You're welcome aboard. You're always welcome to take classes with us, too. So come on. But we're here celebrating Apprenticeship Week and I believe you're going to hear from some apprentices next. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Lorenzo Jones.
Hello, my name is Lorenzo Jones and I'm a student in the apprenticeship program, Local 26 Union, Sheet Metal Union. And I'd just say, like to say a few comments about why I believe that our apprenticeship program is good for the community of Reno. For starters, I've got a chance, well, we get a chance to go to school and work at the same time, so I get to learn in a school setting and hands-on when I'm at the job. And they teach us to be safe in the proper way to do everything, you know, for our job. I've had a chance to work on several high-profile jobs in Reno, Tesla, Northern Nevada, Veterans Home, and several others, you know? And I've had a chance to provide my family with insurance, so my whole family has insurance, you know, my wife and kids. And let's see, what else? And I just think it's a good thing for the community and for the local Sheet Metal Union. It's a blessing for me to be able to work in this union and continue to build Northern Nevada.
Thank you so much, Lorenzo. And thanks for participating in that great program.
Josh Morrow.
Welcome, Mr. Morrow.
Thank you. I'm Josh Morrow. I'm actually the coordinator for the Northern Nevada Sheet Metal Workers Apprenticeship Program Lorenzo is in currently. And I'm here to speak on behalf of National Apprenticeship Week. We have apprentices all over today hitting all of the council and Washoe County Commission meetings and such, speaking to everybody about what we provide. So I think Randy did a great job of summary of us as a whole of the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association. So to just kind of add, I always throw a little bit in on my personal story and everybody seems to kind of always like it. So for my personal story, I'm actually a proud graduate of the University of Nevada. My bachelor's in applied economics and statistics. And I was working in industry. I was a, you know, an office personnel person and tired of working in a job that I never felt I was going to get anywhere in and thankful to some family who is already in the apprenticeship programs. I found my way back after college into apprenticeship and found that it was the best opportunity for myself and my family. I love college. I'm absolutely pro-college. I would do it again. And in fact, if anybody wants to go to college, I tell them, absolutely do it. But by the same token, having these opportunities for our students coming out of the school district to have other options to go to that maybe can't afford to go to a regular university where they have to pay to go, but here we can get them college credits, we can get them education, we help them pay for other classes in college if they want to go to even more classes. We have tuition reimbursement programs. And then they turn out, they've got a career, they can, they actually support our communities, they bring money back into our communities because if you make, if you have a good job, you can spend money. As you all know, the more tax dollars we spend, the more money the district has or the county or whoever. And so these are great opportunities for our students coming out of school district to have an opportunity to come to and I hope you always keep us in consideration. We love coming to career fairs. The big Construction Career Day was a blast. I think we gave out, we had the students build a little box and I think we gave out over 500 boxes that my booth with my apprentices came and we had the students build these little pencil boxes and we built over 500 of them. That was impressive. It was a very busy day, so we look forward to future endeavors with the district, working towards letting our students know who we are, so.
Excellent. Great. Thank you for the support to the kids.
Thank you.
Craig Hill.
Welcome, Mr. Hill.
Thank you. I am a 56-year-old second-year apprentice.
Awesome.
Representing the Local 350 Plumbing and Pipe Trades. The previous four speakers stole all my thunder from my notes, so I'm going to go with a little history of how I came to be in the apprenticeship program. About 16, 17 years ago, I was a substitute teacher. My wife was an English teacher at a high school. I taught auto shop and I taught drafting. So I worked, I taught three classes. So I have a year and a half experience with high school students and I know not every high school student is on the college track. The apprenticeship program is an excellent program to get students who aren't quite sure what they want to do into a job. As mentioned by the previous speakers, a first-year apprentice in the plumbing and pipe trades will make $41,000 a year for only working 50 weeks.
Wow.
Okay. By the time they complete their five-year apprenticeship training program and turn out as journeymen, they will make $85,000 a year for a 50-week work year. Okay? The other benefits are health insurance after 90 days, full health insurance, and retirement funds. Our local has three, two which are automatic, one is voluntary 401K. I came to the decision to join apprenticeship based on the Nevada, Northern Nevada area becoming a tech hub, need for construction workers, skilled construction workers. So that's why I chose the apprenticeship program. Those are the reasons. And I think if that, those items that I mentioned are informed to the students that there is a career path that will earn them college credits, but most of the time they're working. And then if, as they grow into the job, mature, and then if they realize, hey, maybe college is something I want to do. Is that my time limit?
You have, you have 26 seconds.
Well, I think I've said, covered everything without going over too much of what the previous four speakers said. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, and thanks for having been a teacher as well. Thanks for continuing to work with young people.
That's all for this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then let's move on to action to adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Raymond. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
I think they mean that they support the agenda. Thank you all. Remember to slow down, ladies. Thank you for that. Okay, motion carries. Our consent agenda is next and we did have staff responses to board questions on the consent agenda and want to know if anyone wants to remove anything from the consent agenda. And not hearing any, we'll ask for public comment.
John Appolito.
John Appolito with Protect Nevada Children. 2.08, the behavior metrics. I tried to, I looked through that and I found it a little bit interesting. The way I read it, bringing a gun to school is the same as selling a joint to another kid, but maybe I missed something in the interpretation. But that's not the main thing. The main thing I wanted to point out is that this behavior, any of this behavior that's getting recorded, and I know I've told you guys this before and I know you guys understand, anything that goes into Infinite Campus, all those fields that the parents are not aware of, any of this discipline stuff, that's one of the main things that the Infinite Campus and the State Department of Ed cares about is discipline. These kids, the parents of these kids do not know that once something gets entered in Infinite Campus, it's there forever. It never gets deleted. Also, these parents don't know that that most problematic information in Infinite Campus is uploaded every night to the state, to the same system. That data also never gets deleted. And I know you guys don't have a lot of control on what you save or what you don't save, but you can tell the parents. And that's what Protect Nevada Children has always been asking you guys for several years. Tell the parents what's going on. I'm telling you, if the parents knew what was going on, it would take care of the problem. To me, you guys are disadvantaging these kids, especially kids that are getting in trouble in school a lot, especially kids on IEPs, resource kids, kids of color, anybody who's getting in problem. I would have been down there, you know, the masking tape they put on my mouth, that was okay back then. Now, anything I did in second grade would have been recorded. It's not okay. Parents deserve to know. You guys could tell parents. There's nothing that says you can't.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. And just for clarification, as I understand it, the legislation called for Infinite Campus information to be redacted or removed after, six years after a student could have graduated and there has not been a six-year period since that legislation was enacted. So it's not that the information will never be expunged. It will be. It just has, we haven't reached that point in time yet. Okay, do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda? Motion for approval by trustee mayor, is there a second? Second by trustee Dr. Feenster. Is there any further discussion? Any questions from our trustees on the line?
Not to me.
Okay. All right.
Not to me either.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you to staff for your prompt answering of the questions when yesterday was a holiday and I know you had to scramble to get that done, so thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to our items under number three, which are budget items. And our first item, actually, let's see, yep, our first item is Discussion and Possible Action to Accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFER, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018. And we have Mark Mathers, our chief financial officer, Rob Luna, our controller, and Mr. Carter from ID Bailey, welcome. And I did get to get a little intro the other night at the audit committee meeting and it is riveting. I have to, I have to say that there's nothing quite like hearing the presentation on the CAFER, so welcome, gentlemen. Thank you.
So thank you, Mark Mathers, chief financial officer. Since you did introduce the team, that's great. I'll just get out of the way, but I'm happy to report that we had another clean, unmodified opinion this year. The process went very smoothly, thanks, not to me, but it's a testament to staff, including Robbie Carson and Gail Carson, who retired and replacing Gail is Rob Luna, our new controller. So it was a, you know, good process and I will just turn it over to Rob and Dan to go through it a little bit with you.
Thanks, Mark. For the record, Dan Carter, I'm the engagement partner on the Washoe County School District's external audit. Like Mark said, we did issue an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements. That's definitely a good thing, a clean audit. It's the highest level of assurance we can provide to the district. My thought was just to kind of go through the CAFER kind of front to back, just point out some highlights. Definitely don't hesitate to stop me with questions as we go, no reason to hold them to the end. So I always like to appoint boards to the Management's Discussion Analysis section. If you don't read all 245 pages of this CAFER, it's definitely worth it to read the Management's Discussion Analysis. It's on page 4 to 22. It's just an easy-to-read description of the year's financial activities, written by management, kind of plain language description of what happened this year. So as it relates to the government-wide statement of net position, this is on page 23 and 24 of the CAFER. The district is reporting a positive net position in two of the three categories. The first one, net investment in capital assets, total 233 million. That's June 30, 2018. This is down about 23 million from the prior year, which is primarily related to depreciation. No significant changes there. The restricted net position, and these are items restricted for capital projects, debt service, and self-insurance activities, actually increased about 100 million from last year, primarily due to an increase in restricted cash investments. We'll go through that a little bit further in just a minute. And then the unrestricted net position, which is actually a negative $817 million at June 30, 2018, compares to about a negative $580 million last year. So significant decrease in unrestricted net position. Kind of two causes for that. There were the bonds issued during the year and then the district implemented governmental accounting standards, board statement number 75, which brought the liability for other post-employment benefits onto the books this year. That alone was about 170, 156 million dollars in additional liabilities that hadn't been reported in the past. So a couple of big hits to the unrestricted net position, but a similar situation that all Nevada local governments are in for the year. So that's kind of the district on a government-wide basis. We also can look at the financial statements for the individual funds. On a fund basis, the governmental fund balances increased $190 million over the prior year and that includes everything except for the insurance funds and the nutrition services fund.
And that, that sounds like a whole lot of money to most people and that's, again, because we issued bonds for our capital construction program.
Absolutely. And then the receipt of the WC1 revenues throughout the year increased that fund balance substantially over the prior year. Excellent point. As we move through, just looking at the internal service funds, these are your insurance funds. Net position actually increased 33 million, which was almost exclusively in the health insurance fund. And again, this relates back to the implementation of governmental accounting standards. The district in kind of, in addition to 75, had to implement 74. We will prepare separately audited OPEB trust financial statements a little bit later in the year. And as part of that process, the district moved 33 million dollars of assets that were accumulated for the payment of future Nevada PEB benefits out of the OPEB trust fund and into the internal service fund.
And anytime folks hear PEB or OPEB, that's other post-employment benefits. That's our obligation to contribute to retiree health insurance premiums, so, in general, just so folks know. We try to-
Absolutely, and I appreciate that. I should have clarified. But I think it does, it is good to point out that those assets remain restricted for those benefits. They're not, they're not available for the insurance funds to use for any other purpose. So the last piece is the nutrition services fund. Net position increased about 597,000, not a big change, kind of a culmination of all the revenues and expenses flowing through that fund. That's before the prior period adjustment for GASB 75, picking up their piece of that other post-employment benefit liability, which totaled about $6 million, so swung that fund into the red. Any questions so far on the financial information?
Trustee Kelly.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question. Based on the numbers that you see here, how is the district's rating, bond ratings looking with Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's? I don't know if we do Fitch, but do you think that our ratings are going to stay where they are at? Go up? Maybe go down?
That's a good question for Mark.
Yes. So Mark Mathers, CFO. We actually were recently rated for pending our sale of the next series of WC1 bonds. We maintained a double-A rating from S&amp;P and that's really as high as local governments get in Nevada generally. Moody's last year had downgraded us to a single A. However, this year, after talking to them, further educating them about some of the measures the board is taking in terms of the budget- measures the board is taking in terms of the budget, and also with respect to the WC1 revenues, they actually put us on positive outlook. So if we keep going the way we're going, there is a chance we're upgraded back to a double-A there. So it's, it's actually good news.
Yeah, great question. There's no other questions. I'd just like to point out a few of the key notes to the financial statements. On page 57 of the CAFER, note two is the compliance note with NRS, or with the Nevada revised statutes and Nevada administrative code. Heppert reported we didn't find any violations in the district's administration of finances under NRS and NAC. Note three is a keynote that details the cash and investment balances. You can see the district has about 507 million in cash at year-end. 34 million of that is restricted, but that is an increase of about 171 million over the prior year, again, related to the items we've talked about, WC1, and the debt and the revenues. Note seven, on page 67 of the CAFER, is the fund balance classifications. You can see general fund is mostly unassigned for the use by the district for any purpose. Debt service and capital projects funds are all restricted for future projects and payment of future bonds. And then all the other funds, it is either restricted or committed.
Dan, how does our general fund fund balance compare to previous years?
That's a really good question. So the, the change in the general fund fund balance, I guess what you maybe look at is the general fund deficit actually decreased from prior year. General fund last year had a $10 million decrease in fund balance, and this year the decrease was only 2 million. I think that's definitely improvement, and at the end of the year sits at about 41 million dollars. So definitely have a decent fund balance in that fund.
So kudos to the entire staff, because we've been working on reducing that deficit. And I know it may not seem like a big deal to some folks, but it's a very big deal to the district to be able to reduce that deficit by that much. So thank you to everybody for working hard on that. It hasn't been pleasant, and it hasn't been easy, but it certainly contributes to our lower cost of borrowing when we have strong bond ratings, and as we're borrowing money to build schools, that really helps us a lot. So thank you for pointing that out.
Absolutely. And two last note disclosures to bring to your attention, the pension plan disclosures are in note eight, beginning on page 67, and that details the actuarial inputs that go into the district's picking up their portion of the Nevada PERS liability, which for the district is about a $734 million liability at 630, 18. And then note nine to the financial statements are the expanded disclosures over other post-employment benefits. And again, the new liability of about 156 million for future payments of those benefits.
And if I could just share with my colleagues, there was discussion at the audit committee meeting with regard to the amount of that, that outstanding pension liability. It is intimately related to the return on investment that PERS gets. So if there is a better return on investment by PERS, it lowers our liability. And of course, if we don't have as good interest rates, then we have a higher liability. And so that liability actually ranges, per the discussion that ID Bailey had with the audit committee, from perhaps 422 million to 1.1 billion. So it's something that we all keep our eyes on, what's that PERS interest rate return that's reinvested on behalf of our, of our members. So it's a scary, scary, scary number.
It is a big number. And to your point, that, that swing from 400 million to 1.1 billion is only a 1% decrease and 1% increase in the discount rate. So that's, I think, GASB definitely realized that that was a big driver of that number and, and required all entities to disclose that sensitivity analysis. So that's it for the notes to the financial statements. I just wanted to point out that there are budget actual comparisons for each fund in the CAFER. The general fund is reported as a primary statement, and the remaining are in the supplementary data in the back of the CAFER. We talked about the fund balance for the general fund. I did want to point out, we did have one finding related to the financial statement audit. The, the district entered into a crossover debt refunding, which is a complicated transaction we don't deal with very often. Lots of moving parts, and most of them we found to be recorded properly. There was just an interest expense payment that, that didn't make its way into the GL properly. So did post that entry as part of our audit. We did have one finding that we reported to the board last year related to the calculation of amortization of bond premiums. We found that error to be corrected this year. Those calculations were done properly and recorded properly, so definitely a good thing. You know, staff take our recommendations and make improvements, so we always like to see that. As part of our audit, we also audit the district's major federal award programs. In total, the district had about 58 million dollars in federal, federal awards, of which we audited about 27 million. It's 46% coverage. We get to that number, the district didn't technically qualify as a low-risk audity this year from an issue that we've reported last year, actually related to the 2016 audit. So we are required to audit 40% of those federal awards last year and this year. But those, those issues are now passed for two years, so we fully expect the district to be a low-risk audity on a go-forward basis. We did not have any findings related to the grant audit this year, and no findings to follow up on last year. So definitely a good thing. There's a lot of, a lot of federal money that flows through the district, and they do a good job managing it. So again, good news, clean audits, no, no other findings other than just that one issue, so.
Great. Okay. Board members, any questions? Nayala, any questions? Boy, we're really scaring her, you know? This is, this is not the most, you know, riveting thing that we do, but it is very, very important, because we know how important it is to the public that we're paying attention to how the resources are used. How long were you here, you and your team, doing this audit? Just so people know how much is entailed in this.
Absolutely, yeah. We have three people. We're here actually throughout the year. We do some interim work in May. We're here for about a week or two and get going on the grant audit then. And then we come back just after Labor Day, and we're here for about a month, with three or four people making sure that, you know, all the numbers in this book are materially accurate. So it is a lot of work, and, but it's good. We enjoy being here, and the staff, we are a high priority when we're here, which is nice. We ask questions, and we get answers back, you know, immediately, which isn't always the case with our audits.
That's great.
So we appreciate and enjoy being out here.
Excellent. And, and one of the questions that we've certainly had asked since WC1 passed is just, are we having attention paid to our capital projects? And can you comment on any of the auditing that was done on the capital projects?
Yeah, so that, that was brought up in the audit committee meeting as well. We certainly aren't performing any sort of performance audit over the use of those funds and making sure, you know, that, that the district's getting what they're supposed to be out of the use of that money. We're more making sure that the amounts are recorded properly in the CAFER, and we certainly do a lot of work over those revenues, making sure the accounting's proper, you know, especially in a new, when there's a new revenue coming in, making sure that everything is recorded properly. That's our primary focus with the financial statement audit, and we did find that.
And all of those transactions are compliant with all the regulatory framework that applies to any of those transactions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from our trustees on the line?
No, I'm good too.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, we want to thank you, Dan, and your team, and we also want to thank our wonderful financial division staff, because there's a lot of work that goes into this all year round, every day, 365 days a year. So it's a, it's a large operation, and we're very fortunate to have a very dedicated and capable staff. So Rob, and Mark, and the entire team, thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So we have, do we have any public comment on this, JJ? Okay, we need to take action to accept the comprehensive annual financial report. Vice President Raymond.
All right. I move that the Board of Trustees accepts the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Kelly, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you all so much. Great, great job by everybody. Appreciate that. Okay, it's a wrap. And if you guys have, Mark, if you guys have an extra copy of the CAFER, I didn't want to print it at home, 245 pages, so I figured you did. Okay, our next item is Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Direction and Feedback on the Draft Community Survey and the Format of Community Forums for the 2019-20 Fiscal Year Budget Process. And again, Mark Mathers, our chief financial officer, and Samantha Frederickson, our board community engagement coordinator, welcome.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
All right, so I'm going to talk more about the survey, and Samantha's going to cover the community forums, but both of us are here before you to, it's that time of year, to talk about this, this year's cycle for the survey itself, that would begin, we hope, in December, and then the community forums that would begin next calendar year. And so I think for those of you who went through the process last year, and that was everybody, I thought it was a very good process, very helpful process, to have that direct input from the community, and also receive survey responses from more than 2,000 respondents, which is incredible, you know, from, based on my experience. So again, we plan to do that all over again with some tweaks that we'll cover. So I'll just launch into the survey real quickly, and, and you should have in front of you the actual kind of draft survey in Word, kind of portrait orientation. It's a little easier to read, actually, than the PowerPoint we have for you, but I thought I'd have the PowerPoint, just in case there are questions, you can see the wording of questions up on the screen. So again, for our survey, very similar to last year, the first several questions are really kind of background information, and they are checking on the awareness of residents, parents, and so forth regarding kind of our challenges in the financial area. And also this year, we added questions about, you know, kind of the process the state uses to fund school districts, just to, again, get their, understand their level of awareness of those issues. Then the heart and the meat of the survey itself are related to budget issues and questions. Little broader this year than maybe last year, we're trying to keep the questions as relevant to this year's process as we can, knowing that our main focus will be priority-based budgeting, and we don't have those results yet. And then the last section of the survey is really asking about demographic information. And here, we did add a question regarding enrollment that you'll see. So I don't intend to go through these too, too closely, but I'll march through them as fast as I can, question by question.
I actually do read this, you know.
So our first question is about our fiscal challenges, and talks about revenue growth and the fact that that's lagged the growth in our expenditures. So this is very, very similar to last year. Question number two has, has to do with our strategic plan and some of the, again, measures we've taken to reduce the deficit, which you heard about. So again, asking about residents' familiarity with, with that situation. And then the third background question, again, has to do with kind of state funding of school districts. So this is a new question that we're asking about, again, partly, you know, maybe educational here to respondents, but also to understand, you know, kind of their level of awareness.
Mark, I was just going back to the awareness folks have about the strategic plan and the budget shortfall. I think it's, it's really worthwhile in that, in that question, saying what the budget is, because some people, $2.4 million sounds like the sky is falling, you know, that that is a horrendous, impossible amount of money to be not balanced by. So it might be worthwhile to say, you know, either what the total budget is, or that our actual budget shortfall was, you know, X percent.
Great.
Point something percent.
Great comment. I-
No, it's just, yeah, that's why we all talk about it.
Yep.
I just thought about that now. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, no, that's great. That's the kind of feedback we're looking for, because we're kind of close to it here, obviously. So question four starts the, you know, the part of the survey regarding budget, and here we're asking about, you know, this approach of using priority-based budgeting, and just kind of asking residents, you know, do they feel that's, you know, an appropriate way to go or, or not? And, and these kind of questions then would dovetail into discussion at the forums on, you know, what exactly we're doing. Question five-
Just another question, sorry, on, on four. I'm not sure what we would do with the answer to question number four, because we are using the priority-based budgeting, and if people say, "Don't use it," what are we going to do with that information?
Yeah.
It's just a thought. I don't know, I don't know what the purpose of that one is.
You know, it's partly to build awareness to residents about what we're doing, to share with them what we're doing, which, so we could move that part of the discussion up.
Or maybe, you know, maybe rather than, "Do you agree with it?", it might be, you know, "Are you familiar with it?", just like we've had on the other. And then that tells us how much more work we need to do with sharing that information with people.
Okay.
Just a thought, just a thought. I just, you know, we always want to ask questions that we can do something.
You know, another option might be then to combine a little bit, combine number four and five, because if we took that first sentence where we just say, "This is the, this is the approach the district is using," and then it goes right into, based on that approach, where we've identified five priorities, so that might be a way to educate them, but we don't have to ask them if they, you know, agree with it or not agree with it. We can set the stage and then go right into those next bullet points where we start to, you know, give priorities. So just another thing maybe to look at.
Yeah. Okay. And question five does have to do with the external results for our priority-based budgeting process. And again, we kind of split out academic achievement into academic growth, career and college readiness, and well-rounded students. So, but we are asking residents here to allocate $100 to each of those priorities to get a sense from them what they consider most important.
Okay.
And the next question just asks whether there are any other priorities that they can think of, and so that'll be tabulated. Then the next question has to do with equity, and so it has a little bit of a preamble here, but here we're asking residents or parents how they would feel about reallocating resources from higher-rated schools to lower-rated schools, if that meant, I mean, it's a zero-sum game, if that meant reducing resources at higher-rated schools. So we wanted to get their opinions on that. Question eight is, we tried to format it here for the slide, but it's easier to read on your, on your Word document. We thought we would ask about a number of kind of broad areas for reducing costs and looking at other options to reduce our deficit. And here, instead of ranking those, we wanted to ask whether resident, how they felt in terms of strongly oppose, somewhat oppose, somewhat support, or strongly support each of these areas. So it's, again, we put it up here on the screen, but it's easier to kind of read the question in the other attachment you have. These are similar, but not duplicates of last year's survey. And then in question nine, somewhat-
Oh, and we had, I have a question from our colleagues on the phone about question eight. Trustee Frankel, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, President Holland. And under deduction, and one of the things I noticed, and I know it's tricky with surveys, to not bias the question in some ways, and so I think, when I was looking at a couple of them, talk about the likely result.
Yes.
And some of them don't. And so I wonder about trying to find a way to be consistent, so that if we exclude likely impacts, we conclude them for all of them, or we remove the likely impact. I think I just kind of want to keep it as non-biased as possible, and so if we either talk about what the likely reduction might impact, or the results, the negative impact might be, I just want- might be, I just want to sway the responses in any way whatsoever. But thank you for this work.
Thank you, Veronica.
Sorry, just making notes.
It's all right.
Okay. All right. And then question nine, are kind of taking those actual reduction areas in question eight, and this is where we would ask residents and parents and other respondents to rank those reductions in terms of what would be their first choice, second choice, and third choice. So again, very similar to last year's questions. And so I think Trustee Frankel's comment probably applies here, too.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And then our last kind of substantive question beside, you know, in addition to the demographic questions at the end, concerns enrollment at charter schools and possible reasons for students' enrollment in charter schools. And as you probably are aware, we have a task force that is working on this issue. So we thought these responses would help that task force do some of their work.
And that, we didn't ask that last year, did we?
No, we did not, yeah. So that really concludes the kind of more material substantive questions. The rest of it concerns demographic questions. We kind of chopped a few of them down, and I know we had a suggestion for change that we'll make. Overall, we're trying to keep the survey, again, kind of punchy and quick and short so that people do take it, and then don't get frustrated with the length of the survey. So, but we think these responses will be helpful to us, once again, in looking at budget ideas. You know, last year, we did compare the public's responses to the survey and at the community forums to what staff was recommending, and that would be our intention, again, in this year's budget process, just to know what the public said and to explain if something wasn't pursued, why, but also to, you know, see where we are recommending reductions versus where the public thought we should do so.
And it was, I thought it was really successful, the way the survey data was used in the forums, so we could have that as a departure point for discussion. That was really, really helpful. Questions from other trustees or suggestions, input on the survey? Yes, Nialla.
I have a question.
Oh, hang on, Angie, I'll come right back to you. Nialla has a question, and remember, did you push your little button up the face?
Could you go back to question nine for me, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you explain to me what a lower priority program is?
I'm sorry, I'm reading the question.
It's the last bullet.
Oh, you know, yeah, that's a good question. That's a good question. We wanted to throw out to them that, you know, again, we're continuing to analyze programs, and there will be programs that are identified as, you know, lower priority in terms of not aligning to the district's strategic plan, not moving the needle when it comes to academic achievement, or safe and supportive schools, or community college readiness, or career college readiness. So we kind of threw it in there to say, I mean, to us, it's kind of obvious, but we wanted to let the respondents know we're pursuing, reducing whatever comes out of that process as lower priority.
Well, okay, well, could you give me an example of what a lower priority program is, and what you would, why you would consider it lower priority?
You want some help?
Yeah, sure.
I think also sometimes we look at the impact, right? So we might have a school that use a particular reading program, or three or four schools, right, versus the entire district. So if we're supporting an isolated program, and maybe they've used it for the past 10 years, right, but now that we're in budget cuts, we got to make better decisions. And so will we support that program, or will we require them to, say, use the adopted reading text and all the supports we've purchased? So I don't think in terms of that, I mean, we say lower priority programs, but they might be important to the school, but we still provide support versus the district in a whole. Is it still aligned to the work that we do with our strategic plan?
I would vote for taking that bullet out, because I think we can all assume that we are going to be reducing lower priority programs, and without identifying what they are, people can't really make an intelligent decision, informed decision in that regard. Good, good point, Nialla.
Thank you.
Do you have any more words of wisdom that you can help us with? You had a lot of them last year, that was great. Dr. Taylor, do you still have your question?
I do, but I do want to say that that was a great question.
Yeah.
That was a great question, and I like the recommendation to move that bullet. My question is, it's more of one, you know how a part of, of many of us here is, "Why should I participate in these surveys? Because no one listens to what I say or anything like that." Is there any opportunity, and maybe there just isn't, but is there any way that we can say something or show something that, you know, these comments help make decisions or something like that, to, you know, to just give some reinforcement to, "Hey, this is really important, and we really do hear you," and because we all know that, it really did help to shape some of our decision-making around the budget last year.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
I think one of the questions that we're including, this is Samantha Frederickson for the record, is also asking people if they participated in the budget forums last year as well, because I think that goes a little bit to what you're saying, yeah.
Well, it really doesn't go the wrong way to say, though. I mean, I did see the question, and I think that's a great question on there, under those optional ones, but I guess what I'm saying is, is somewhere in here, maybe in this introductory paragraph, when we say each year, yada, 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 can we say it in a line or two that these helped us make very difficult, this feedback or this input helped us make some very difficult budget decisions last year, and we're looking forward to their input again, or something like that? So it isn't a question that I'm, I guess, do we take this opportunity to say that, "Hey, this stuff really does, this really does help. We really do use it."
Yeah, we tried to do that in that second paragraph in the intro, but we'll beef it up. We'll beef that up.
Okay. Good point.
Oh, you know what, and I guess I ran through that, I get to see that one before. But maybe we can beef it up just a little bit, Mark, I guess that's the part I'm trying to get to. I want them to know that we really value this, and this really does make a difference.
And we truly do, and so yes, absolutely, Dr. Taylor. I'll beef that wording up, so it's a little clearer and stands out a little bit better.
Okay, thank you. And maybe perhaps, Mark, look at, we're hoping your suggestions this year will be just as helpful. It's almost like, well, you helped us last year, and we hope this is, we hope you take something worthwhile this year, maybe a little more positive in terms of, instead of, "We're hoping."
Okay.
"We're looking forward to your suggestions being just as helpful this year," or something like that.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. Because of you and your input, we've been able to reduce the deficit, blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
Right, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Thanks, Dr. Taylor. Anyone else? Dr. Feimster.
Yeah, this looks really great, you guys. I particularly like the additional information, because I think it's important to get feedback as to why students are leaving our school district. I was wondering if where we have, "Do not agree with Washoe County School District policies," is there a way to get something specific, rather than just say, "We don't agree with your policies?" Because I think that gives us more, you guys, more specificity with regards to what to work on. I mean, policies is, a whole bunch of them. I think, especially when it comes to students, because they know exactly what policies they're referring to, and parents.
Yeah.
So if there is, you know, just a little line saying specifically what policy.
Okay, I think we can do that.
Okay.
Good, good suggestion. Vice President Raymond, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a comment. I just really like question number five, and how we're asking them to take the $100 and distribute it. I think that's going to be really interesting to see how they, but I like how it's interactive, and we're asking the people taking the survey to kind of go through the exercise of distributing it across pretty, you know, hard categories to separate out, so I like that one a lot.
Good, okay. Sam, did you want to add anything about the budget forums, or?
Sure. And just to add one quick note about the survey, too, that I think is really, is important, is that one of the things that we heard last year from people who gave feedback at the forums was that they wanted a place to be able to just write something into the survey, which we did not allow last year, but we are allowing this year. So I think that that will hopefully also provide some additional input and shows folks that we're listening to that feedback. So I think we learned a lot last year about the, how to structure the community forums and how to do this survey. And so the community forums this year will be similar but different, so we will hold five again. And I do have scheduled dates now. How they will be a little bit different is that we're, a few of them will be more targeted to specific audiences, to allow for more specific feedback. So the very first forum will be on January 23 in the morning at Dolan. They're offering their space for us to have an event there, which is awesome. And that's going to be targeted to community partners, business folks, nonprofit people. So that'll be, it'll be structured a little bit different, but it will still be interactive in that those folks will be able to contribute their thoughts and ideas, and their particular feedback based on their role within the school district. And then we'll have two kind of general community forums that are similar to the ones we did last year. So one kind of a little bit more north that we're going to hold at Toll's Elementary, and then another one a little bit more south. That location is still being worked out, but those will be on January 24 and then on February 4. So those will be the evening, two evening forums. Then we're going to hold one on January 31 in the evening at the Washoe Education Association. So this one will be targeted more to staff, so not just teachers, but also education support professionals, administrators, school district staff in general. So we'll be reaching out to staff particularly for that one. And again, it'll be interactive, just as the other community forums, but we'll get a little bit different feedback, I think, having it focused on staff. And then the final one that we're going to hold will be on February 11, and that will be held here in the boardroom, but it will be a virtual forum as well. And this was President Simon Holland's great idea, so we're going to try it out. But I think this will be great, because it will allow, we're going to livestream it and take questions, and, you know, we're working on the logistics of that. But I think it will really allow people from a lot of the outlying areas to be able to participate as well. And again, you know, we're hoping, we got a pretty good turnout last year, I think, you know, hopefully we can get an even better turnout this year. One thing that was great about last year, as you all remember, was that we had a pretty diverse group. We had students, Nialla was at, almost all of them, I think. We had.
And her dad, and her little sister.
Yes. So I expect you guys back this year. And, yeah, we had a lot of staff members, we had a lot of parents, so hoping to do that again. But I would love any feedback or thoughts or ideas that you all have as we're getting into planning these.
I really, I don't want to lose the interaction between staff and families, because that was so moving for families to hear from teachers and other staff from the schools about what the reductions mean to them and the impacts on students. So I hope we'll still encourage staff to come to all of them, even though there is one just for them. Other comments? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you know, in going out to these schools to meet with the kids, I think you ought to have one just for students, because they've got fresh ideas, and I think that'd be, you know, to have it here at the district, one for one week for adults and the next week for students. Because at Dilworth, when we were there, at Dilworth, we really got some good points. And sometimes if they're mixed in with adults, sometimes they pull back a little bit instead of really giving their point of view. And I would suggest that you have a sixth one just for students, and if you do it online and stuff, I think it'd really be great.
Great, yeah. Good reminder, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Ms. Champion?
I was just wondering that since last year, was there a lack of like a specific group of people that didn't come? And if so, if there were, is there a way that you're planning on getting them here this year? Because, I don't know, I think that's important.
That's a good question. I think, I think I would like to see more students there, so I'd like trustee mayor's idea as well, and perhaps that's something we can talk about, maybe even with student advisory council, participating in that, because I think that the student voice is really important. So I think we can definitely have more students there. I think, I mean, I would be curious to hear what you all think, too, participating in these, but I think I would just like to see more participation and more people. I think we had kind of a little bit of each sort of type, but more, you know, more people, which it is hard. So hopefully the virtual forum will allow more people to participate who can't, you know, get off, get off work and rush here in time, or, you know, they're with their families, they're at home, but maybe they can log onto their computer and watch a video and submit a question and participate that way.
Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. Maybe two things to help drive people to come to the surveys or to come to the town halls. One is, well, if you fill out the online survey, when you submit it, maybe they can get like a free taco. No, I'm just kidding, that's, but maybe what we could do is, we could tell people.
That might work.
You know, maybe.
You're going to donate those tacos?
Yeah, I'll have my wife and I will make them off. What if we, maybe it's important, though, that we tell people, last year, we had, you know, several hundred people representing .0001% that attended these, and maybe, you know, I don't want to say shame, but just point out to people that last year, we really got a lot of good information out of the surveys and out of the people that attended, but it was, it was still a really small number compared to like the county population or the people that have kids in the district. So maybe just kind of throwing out that this year, we're hoping to get, you know, half a percent of the parents to come out, just so people know that, oh, last year, you know, this is an important thing, and that few people came last year, I want to make it out this year. And free tacos.
Okay, other comments or questions? Anything else from our trustees on the phone?
Just thank you very much, this is great work.
Thanks, Trustee Frankel.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else you want to add?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, I know trustees won't be shy about sharing thoughts they may have that come to them later, so.
Good, good.
It's a, it's a team sport, so great, great work, and I just want to congratulate, as I know all of the trustees do, the staff, on this great work. And I know, Samantha, you were, you were part of bringing this together last year. It was hugely successful. I think it's a, you know, it's kind of a best practice nationally, and to all the staff that worked on this and helped us, all the staff members who came out at night for all of these programs, it was really worthwhile, sometimes through snowstorms and rainstorms, but it was very, very helpful, and we really appreciate it. So thank you all. Okay. Thanks. Do we, we don't have to do any, oh, we do have public comment. Do I have to ask for public comment? Any, okay, all right. So I can take a motion for the direction that has been given today. Would anyone give us a motion in that regard? And no tacos. Go ahead, Trustee Kelly.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve with suggestions the draft community survey and format of community forums for the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget process.
Thank you, well done. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Raymond, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, great. Thank you both very much. Okay, we have some special guests here today, so in lieu of taking a break, I want to move forward, if that's okay. We have a couple of very special school principals with us today as we consider adoption of Washoe County School District Board Resolutions 18-010 and 18-011, resolutions recognizing and congratulating Mount Rose K-8 School of Languages and Roy Gom Elementary School for being chosen as 2018 National Blue Ribbon Schools. And would Mr. Sutherland and Ms. Chris Brown come forward? Do you want to come forward? Do you want to come forward with me and give these to them? Well, on behalf of the whole Board of Trustees, I would like to read the, actually I'll go over here and read it, read these resolutions. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Washoe County School District recognizing and congratulating Mount Rose K-8 School of Languages and Roy Gom Elementary School for being chosen as 2018 National Blue Ribbon Schools. Whereas the National Blue Ribbon Schools program recognizes public and private elementary, middle and high schools based on their overall academic excellence or their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. And whereas the National Blue Ribbon School Award affirms the hard work of students, educators, families and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging content. And whereas Mount Rose K-8 School of Languages and Mount, and Roy Gom Elementary School were chosen as 2018 National Blue Ribbon Schools as exemplary high performing schools. And whereas our schools are among 300 public schools in the nation, two of our schools out of 300 in the entire United States selected for this prestigious award. And whereas they were recognized as 2018 National Blue Ribbon School Award winners at an awards ceremony in Washington DC on November 7th and 8th. And whereas the mission of the schools are to collaboratively create a community of, this is for Mount Rose, intercultural understanding by guiding students to become leaders who are challenged to reach their highest potential. And whereas Mount Rose K-8 School of Languages is a two-way Spanish language immersion school, helping students to develop high levels of language proficiency and literacy in both program languages, to demonstrate high levels of academic achievement and to develop relationships and an appreciation for and an understanding of diverse cultures. And whereas Mount Rose K-8 School of Languages incredibly deserving of this esteemed National Blue Ribbon Award, now therefore be it resolved that the Washoe County Board, School Board of Trustees congratulate the students, families, teachers, staff and administrators at both these schools for this much deserved celebration of excellence. Signed by Katie Simon-Holland, President, Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, and Tracy Davis Superintendent. So let me give these to each of you. And thank you very much. You can stand up and we'll, we'll do a photo. So Chrissy, for you, thank you so much. Congratulations. And let's see.
And I'm just going to add, we are going to be out at their schools delivering a huge banner and breakfast for the staff, just in honor of their success. So we're excited about that.
That's great. Okay.
I'm going to take the photo from back here.
Okay. All right. That's great. All right. Thank you.
And I'm just going to add, we are going to be out at their schools delivering a huge banner and breakfast for the staff, just in honor of their success. So we're excited about that.
About that.
That's great. Okay.
I'm going to take the photo from back here.
Okay. All right.
That's great.
All right. Thank you.
And I'm just going to add, we are going to be out at their schools delivering a huge banner and breakfast for the staff, just in honor of their success. So we're excited about that.
About that.
That's great. Okay.
I'm going to take the photo from back here.
Okay. All right. That's great.
All right. Thank you. Well, we are so grateful for the work that you and your teams do. And it is such a great honor for our district to have two of the 300 schools in the entire United States, right here in the Washoe County School District. You, you both set a high bar and, and I know your school families set a high bar for involvement and engagement and support. So we thank you, we thank the staff teams and we thank all of the volunteers and the families that make your schools so great. We're proud of everybody. Thank you. All right. Is there any public comment? Okay. Well, then we would entertain a motion to approve these resolutions. All right. Thank you, trustee mayor.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a, we have a second from the entire board. Okay. Trustee Feimster. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Congratulations. And again, thank you so much. Okay. Trustees, can we be back in our seats in 15 minutes? Well, John, we need you for a quorum, so, or a quorum present. That's right. Okay. We'll be in recess until 3:34. Okay. We will call the meeting back to order and we are now on item 4.02, which is discussion possible action to provide preliminary approval for the proposed revision of Board Policy 1505, Visitors to District Property Meaningful Access, which includes revision of language related to visitor management and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. Chief Jason Trevino and Irene Payne are Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. Welcome. And floor is yours.
Okay. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Superintendent Davis. So this board policy, we've been around a few different revisions on it so far. And we had the Board Policy Committee last week where we got some feedback and we implemented those into this latest version, which are, you will see in there particularly under number two, under the governing principles. There was some addition there in A. And then in 3A11. And then F, we provided some input as well. So we think we've captured the, the feedback from the Policy Committee last week, from what was given to us incorporated in the new version. And other than that, we didn't change anything else other than what you guys presented.
Great. Thank you. And we did have a, a very lively discussion at the Policy Committee meeting. And we recognize that when we ask people to present government-issued ID cards, that does have implications for folks and, and the welcoming environment. We also talked about the fact that the welcoming environment at our schools is really created by the staff and how people are welcomed by the staff into the schools. And we do need to have government-issued ID cards, which will include those issued from another country or a state of Nevada issued ID provided to non-citizens. So we want to make sure that, again, people feel welcomed in our schools. Do board members have any questions? And thank you for making the changes that were discussed at the Policy Committee. Any questions on the phone? Are you still there?
I'm still here.
Go ahead.
I spoke briefly with Lisa Scurry about the, this policy and any reference or the possible need to reference anything related to a court order or a domestic violence protection order. And I believe that, and Chief Trevino can speak to that, but I, I was actually just thinking about that from the standpoint of the, some of the other references to other legal issues that would prohibit someone from being on our, on our campus. So Chief Trevino, could you just speak to your thoughts on where best that should, should go?
Yeah. So that would, we're looking at under F violations and then number two. If we were going to add it, we would add it there. Our only concern there was the, the weapons and possession of a controlled substance were more things that we would deal with on a more routine basis. The violation of protection order is certainly something that we do run across, but that isn't something that would necessarily be flagged unless it was reported to us. It can certainly go in there. The concern was, at what point do you stop adding stuff as to crimes? Because all crimes really fit under two. So it just depends on how many examples, I guess, we want to put in there. Because it does say additionally potential violations of local, state or federal laws. And then we added the, accept the immigration status. So it encompasses all laws and we just gave a couple of examples. So it just comes down to how many examples we want to put in there.
What, what if we put it on, under governing practices, 3A sub three? The, the, that, and I, I appreciate your suggestion, trustee Frankel, because that is a, a very important piece of why we are screening people at entrance to school. And we did have conversation about that at the Policy Committee, that there are, that are family issues that need to be addressed. That one says exclude from the premises any individual who is found to be a registered sex offender on an active warrants list, on the FBI terrorist list. We could include or otherwise restricted from visiting students due to a TPO or something like that. Is that something we could do?
Or a court order.
Or a court order. That's a good way to put it. Or, yeah.
That works for me.
Chief, does that, something like that, would that be?
It, it could. I think that it's a little broad there because the restraining order or temporary protection order isn't going to be as broad as say, a registered sex offender or an active warrant. That active warrant's going to be active regardless of where you're at. A temporary protection order is going to be very specific to certain locations and it may even be very specific to one school but not another. So just because they have a protective order does not necessarily mean they're going to be automatically excluded from a school. And in fact, they could be an employee at one of our schools that has a protection order against them that's not impacted by their employment. So I would just be, I'm just real hesitant of the protection order because they're so individualized. They, they're not a big broad category like, like an active warrant. Maybe legal counsel has some weigh-in on that as well.
What I'd like to just suggest, if, if it's not appropriate to identify in the policy for the reasons that you mentioned, chief, I, I'd like to just make sure that we address the issue of how those are handled. Because not all, like you said, not all protection orders address restrictions from schools, but some do and some of those situations can be extremely volatile. So I, I guess the regulation's probably the best place to identify what, what our staff action's going to be and how our system is going to be able to know that and screen for that. So if that's not appropriate in the policy, I'm fine leaving it out. I just wanted to mention that on the record.
Yeah. Chief Trevino, for the record. And I definitely would agree with you on the regulation portion of it. I think it would probably be better fit there because you're absolutely right. It is something that we will deal with. We currently deal with it. But it's because of the individual nature of it and the majority of the time, especially when those are fresh, we're not going to know about them unless the, one of the parties notifies us. Because until they're served and things like that, they may not even be in the system yet. So we are kind of dependent on, on feedback from the person, one of the respected parties to some extent on those. And we can certainly address that in regulation on if a protection order is in place that prohibits the person from being on that property, then this is how you will handle that. I think that's a good fit.
That's great. Good, good input. Good discussion. Anything else on this, on this particular policy? And again, thank you for the good work on this. I know it also was reviewed with the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission and really represents a lot of good thinking on how we can increase even greater security and safety of our students. If a board member has a, a motion, would you include the direction to, to work with staff on the inclusion in the regulation of something to deal with court orders about presence at schools? Okay. Do we have a motion? Vice President Raymond? Oh, go ahead. Yes. Dr. Feimster.
Shouldn't we say specific staff? Because this happened to me one time. One TPO started at, well, ended at 12, 12 o'clock. Another one started at like 12:05. And I remember that both lawyers had to get involved and our school district lawyer, they can get very tight. So I was thinking just, you should have specific staff.
Well, I think the, the superintendent will determine which staff gets assigned to that. Is that comfortable for you, Superintendent? Okay. Yep. Mr. Mayor?
You know, that's tough. Because a lot of times in divorce cases, the mother gets a court order against the father. The father sometimes hasn't been served or doesn't know about it. He goes up to the school, little Johnny's at, out to recess, sees his father, starts yelling and screaming daddy, daddy, daddy. It's not, it, it, there's a lot of stuff there that you gotta think of the kids. And if there's one thing that should happen, it should be that whoever gets the order goes to the school with a copy of it and gives it to the principal or the secretary. Because it, it's dangerous and, and, but if you're not told about it, and those things happen. And then there's other ones. There's mothers that want to let the dad see them with the counselor, but they never tell anybody. Why, they should call up and say, can I speak to your counselor? I, I will let my son meet with my dad if you're there as supervisor. But yet if you have too broad, zero in on all these, you're going to miss some and you're going to punish others. I think you really should take a long look at this.
And that's why it's, why it's best in the regulation as opposed to in the policy. So I think that's good guidance.
I'd like, I'd like to see, you know, you check out with principals and stuff and see how it is now. But it, it would come up all the time. And you know, especially some dads, they'd say they had a protection order against the mother and they didn't.
Yep.
And so what happens?
Yep. We had a motion by, oh, we didn't get the motion made.
I was going to make it.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Is everyone done?
Yep. Okay. Go ahead.
So I move the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval for the proposed revision of Board Policy 1505, Visitors to District Property Meaningful Access and initiates the 13-day public comment period and takes into consideration some of the conversation related to court orders in the administrative regulation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, trustee Frankel. Is there any further discussion? Good, good discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, chief and Irene. Okay. Item 4.03 is discussion possible action to provide preliminary approval for the proposed revision of Board Policy 1140, Distribution and Display of Information and Materials to Students and Staff, which includes addition of language related to restrictions against distribution of certain materials to students when a legitimate pedagogical purpose does not exist, and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. And Ms. Payne?
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Simon-Holland, trustees, Superintendent Davis. I'm here to talk to you today about Policy 1140. You actually reviewed the policy and revised it and approved it much earlier on this year, in April to be precise. What I'm back in front of you to do is really to tidy up the language to make sure it aligns with the changes in the regulation. I spoke to the Policy Committee last week and they had a change to make or an addition, which I've included. So we're really looking at, in terms of the couple of changes that are being made, we're looking at governing practices and we're looking at A11, where it talks about information materials. That we're also including in that piece that originate from a district, department, school or school program. And then secondly, the, the addition is to give some clarity to principals around the material that can be approved. And what we've added there is to clarify that it has to have a legitimate pedagogical purpose, which is an extra learning activity or opportunity. And then this is the piece that was added by the Policy Committee that legitimately ties to a school's curriculum and/or programming.
Any discussion on this one? Hearing none.
Thank you, President Simon Holland, trustees, Superintendent Davis. I'm here to talk to you today about Policy 1140. You actually reviewed the policy and revised it and approved it much earlier on this year in April, to be precise. What I'm back in front of you to do is really to tidy up the language to make sure it aligns with the changes in the regulation. I spoke to the policy committee last week and they had a change to make or an addition, which I've included. So we're really looking at in terms of the couple of changes that are being made. We're looking at governing practices and we're looking at A11 where it talks about information materials that we're also including in that piece that originate from a district, department, school, or school program. And then secondly, the the addition is to give some clarity to principals around the material that can be approved. And what we've added there is to clarify that it has to have a legitimate pedagogical purpose, which is an extra learning activity or opportunity. And then this is the piece that was added by the policy committee that legitimately ties to a school's curriculum and or programming.
Any discussion on this one? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you trustee Kelly.
Moved up the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval for the proposed adoption of Board Policy 1140 Distribution and Display of Information and Materials to Students and Staff and initiates the 13-day public comment period.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Second by Vice President Raymond. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, we'll.
Aye, I was on mute. Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Okay, item 4.04 Discussion Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval for the Proposed Revision of Board Policy 6140 Formerly Board Policy 6142.1 Sexuality, Health, and Responsibility Education Share, which includes revision of language related to the process by which parent guardian permission is obtained prior to student participation in the share program and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. And Deborah Byersdorf is here and Rochelle Proctor, coordinator of our share program. Welcome.
Thank you, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, and members of the board. Again, I'm joined here with Rochelle Proctor, our share facilitator, bringing back to you a policy that we discussed at last week's policy meeting. I'm going to turn it over to Rochelle to just give a brief background on what's brought us before you today and including work with our share committee and then the one change that was suggested at last week's meeting.
Okay, so as you recall, last year, we came forward with an updated share policy. And as you requested, we went back to the committee because we had added some language at the district level that had not been reviewed by the share advisory committee. So over the earlier part of the school year, we brought it back, the policy, the updated policy to the share advisory committee with the language that was added. They had some a couple of questions we were able to answer and clarify any questions, concerns they had and again, put it through for the policy review. And before it went up for policy review last week, President Simon Holland had mentioned a concern under number two guiding practices C, where we did go in and at the end add Washoe County School District developed non copyrighted protected curriculum materials to the district's website. So we did add that and besides that, everything else remains the same from the last spring.
Great, thank you. Any questions or discussion? And the reason that the non copyrighted protected phrase was added was that we had in the previous version, we had said selected materials would be posted on the website and it just allowed for a lot of questions about, well, who's selecting and based on what? And so this is just clarifying that our intention is to put everything on the website that we are legally able to put on the website as our own. So, okay, any questions? Did you what? Yeah, do we have any public comment? JJ, no public comment? Any questions on the phone? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
Not for me.
Okay, thanks Angie. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you trustee Kelly. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't slow down on that one. I know you're in favor. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you for the hard work on all of this. It's we thank the share advisory committee because we know that is a very difficult assignment and they're doing great work for us, so thank you.
But the work's just starting.
The work's just starting. That's right. It is. Okay, we are down to item 4.05 Discussion Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval for the Proposed Revision of Board Policy 6725 English Learners Formerly Board Policy 6171 Limited English Proficiency, which includes changes to align to and comply with state and federal laws to include the definition of a long-term English learner and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. Ms. Byersdorf.
Again, thank you, Deborah Byersdorf, chief academic officer. Janine Kelly, director of EL, our English Language Development Department sends her regret she was not able to be here today. But I'm bringing back what we're hoping is a finalized policy with changes for the most part around definitions brought to us from the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA. And if you remember last week, Janine walked us through some of the definitions that we believe needs need to stay in the policy because they will help direct programming and also subsequent changes to regulations. Some of the changes that we talked about last week, under 1A Guiding Principles, we added the term socio cultures to the to the policy, the proposed policy changes. And let me just look through here. And then also under definitions, which is now at the back of the policy, we added a little bit more clarity around, one, for the purposes of this and any associated policies and regulations and in accordance with state and federal law, the following designated status to identify, assess, and support English learners. And then also under those definitions as well, 1C, we expanded the federal designation in that last sentence there and added and may be at risk for poor academic performance as we discussed last week.
Thank you. And I also appreciated and noticed that under the guiding principles, I was added that native language is considered an important factor in each student's school success in school and that cultures and native languages are valued and respected within all schools. Appreciated that since we are very much about equity and diversity in our district and want to make sure that we honor what everyone brings to the schools. Any discussion, comments? Okay, is there a motion? I think it's your turn, Dr. Feimster. No, you can go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I think this is great work and I think it's a past due and I think it's a roadmap to success for our children. And it's my pleasure to say that I approve this and I would like to see it up for a vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Motion by Mr. Mayor, second by Dr. Feimster. I forgot to ask, is there any public comment? JJ, no public comment? Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you very much. Good work indeed. Okay, that takes us to item 4.06 Discussion Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval for the Proposed Adoption of Board Policy 5025 Student Placement and Communication of Progress Promotion Acceleration and Retention, which includes language related to the district's commitment to ongoing communications with students and their parents guardians related to their progress and the deletion of Board Policy 5036 Parents as Partners and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. Dr. Kristen McNeil, deputy superintendent.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. So really for Board Policy 5025, when we brought it to you last week at Board Policy, the really the only change was more of a clarification. If you take a look under governing practices, section D, small number two, if there is a belief that a student may be retained in the same grade for the succeeding school year, notice shall be provided to the student's parent guardian, alerting them to the fact and the change was as soon as possible, but not later than May 1st. And that was the clarification that we wanted to to bring forward to you today. And that was really the only change. And then the deletion, obviously, of Board Policy 5036 because those aspects are incorporated into this policy.
Okay, great. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Do we have any public comment? No public comment? Okay, we would entertain a motion at this time. Mr. Mayor?
Move for approval.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Mayor. Oh, oh, sorry Angie, beat you to it. Melina beat you to it.
Damn.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. McNeil. Okay, and then we are on to item 4.07, which is Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval for the Proposed Adoption of Board Policy 9215 Culture and Climate, which speaks to civility and customer services as ideals of the district and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. Dr. McNeil.
Good afternoon, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. We brought this policy to you last week as well, Board Policy 9215 Creating and Maintaining a Positive Culture and Climate. It was established through the Enrollment Task Force with a heavy amount of work on Ms. Scurry's part for putting the policy together. So we want to thank her once again in front of the board. There were no changes requested at the Board Policy meeting, so I am submitting it for moving on to 13-day.
Okay. Any questions or discussion by the board? Any public comment? Okay, do we have a motion? Trustee Kelly?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Dr. Feimster. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you. And as always, thank you, Ms. Scurry, for the great work that you do on all of our policies. Yeah, she's running out the door before we give her anything else to do on those. Very nicely done. Okay, 4.08 is a very, very happy occasion. Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Transition of Alice Smith Elementary, Double Diamond Elementary, and Spanish Springs Elementary Schools from the multi-track year-round calendar to the balanced calendar for the 2019-2020 school year. And we have a wonderful cast of characters here today led by Dr. McNeil. These are some of our favorite characters, so we'll put it that way.
Thank you, President Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. It is a very special day that we bring this information toward to you all. And with me today, I have area superintendent, Mr. Joe Ernst, area superintendent, Mr. Richard Swanberg. We also have special appearances by, I believe, Jim, there he is, Jim Verdi. We have Arch Ruth. And we also had 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 to leave, Mr. Wortman, but he was here. He is here in spirit. So without further ado.
President Holland, Superintendent Davis, and Board of Trustees and special representative from Reed High School, who's asking wonderful questions. Thank you for being here today.
Indeed, I know. You're hired.
Today, we're going to talk about the multi-track conversion to balanced calendar. And so we're going to just kind of move through a quick presentation to share some numbers with you that justify that movement.
For the record, Richard Swanberg. So in the fall of 2017, the board had to make some tough decisions about overcrowding at some of our elementary schools. Three of them in particular, Alice Smith, Spanish Springs, and Double Diamond. Each school created a SOMP and provided it to the board and two schools.
A SOMP is?
A school overcrowding management plan.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll never say it again, but anyways.
Yes, that's right.
So two of the schools, Double Diamond and Spanish Springs, were to trigger 120% threshold for the 1718 school year and Alice Smith was supposed to trigger this year. Part of their SOMP, they said instead of gutting the computer lab, instead of splitting rooms, let's just go a year early. So they decided as a SOMP to go multi-track year-round for the 1718 school year. So we have three schools that are currently on the multi-track year-round schedule to address overcrowding, but because of certain situations such as WC1 passing, new schools, some of our numbers didn't come in as high as they were projected, we are recommending to look at a new schedule. Dr. Joe's going to talk about some of those factors right now.
So a couple of factors that contribute to that. As you are all well aware, we're excited that we have some movement of our sixth grade students going to middle school. We also are happy to know that we have three new schools that will be opening, Sky Ranch, Desert Skies, and Poliquita Elementary School. And as Mr. Swanberg mentioned, we're sometimes seeing lower than projected enrollment growth. So what we'd like to do now is just take you through school by school to share the preliminary projections.
The first two slides are for Double Diamond Elementary School. And as you know, Poliquita is going to be opening in the 1920 school year, so we're very excited. It's coming along. Our principal, Donna Angotti, is working with the community to develop colors, mascots, and everything like that. But on the first slide, you could sort of see right now Double Diamond has 867 students. I believe that's a little low, but with the new school, we're projecting to be about eight, 585. With the growth out there, you could sort of see that we're going to start going up a little quicker than normal, but we still have the ability to take that enrollment. The next slide you're familiar with sort of tells you, we want to stay out of the golden rod because that's sort of where we get close to multi-track again. But as you could sort of see, we have plenty of room for the foreseeable future and we also have property down there. So if it does become an issue, we could build a fourth elementary school down in the Double Diamond area.
For Spanish Springs, currently approximately 871 students. You can see next year with sixth graders now going over to Shaw Middle School, that's going to come down to about 766. And then the following year, we get a much bigger decrease in the new elementary school that will be located next to Sky Ranch Middle School. Again, you can look at some of the capacity numbers over there. Again, we look pretty good. And so we'll head over to Alice Smith.
So when you look at Alice Smith, this year, Alice Smith was projected to be about 825 students and you could see that we're quite a bit under that, which is good. And you could sort of see for the 2020-2021 year, we're going to have a decrease of another 20 students and another decrease. When we start going up again, 2022, 2023, we do, we are on the process right now of buying property in the stead area for a new elementary school. And by the time we get to 2023, we're hoping that that will either be in place or we'll be looking at other options. When you look at Alice Smith, it still has sixth grade and our goal is to get sixth grade up to O'Brien within the next few years. At this point, O'Brien does not have the capacity, but we're looking at different options. So we'd love to get all of North Valley's elementary schools into O'Brien as soon as possible. So that would also decrease those numbers as well. So when we look at Alice Smith, it's still a little yellow, but we're at 107%, which is below the 120 threshold. Then we're at 104, 103, 104. And like I said, when it starts climbing up a little bit, we should be anticipating either relief from movement to O'Brien or a new elementary school in that area. On the bottom, you could see for 1920, it looks like we're going to be one classroom short. So we'd probably be looking at one team. The next year, probably no teams and the next year, maybe one team also. So as we look there, we're looking pretty solid. And Mr. Ruth and Mr. Verdi are here, so if you have any questions specifically about their schools, but I think they're both glad to be going back to the balanced calendar. There are some reasons we went to multi-track, but it's better for the community and the neighborhood and the students and the families if we're all on one track.
That's great.
So moving forward with recommendations, our superintendent recommends the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees approves the transition of Alice Smith Elementary School, Spanish Springs Elementary School, and Double Diamond Elementary School from the multi-track year-round calendar to the balanced calendar, beginning with the 2019-2020 school year.
Okay.
With that, any questions?
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody who has been patient with us in moving through this multi-track year-round schedule. We know that it is tough on families and tough on staff. It's tough on the community and we're very grateful for their patience. And we're also extremely grateful for the community's support for WC1 that has enabled us to fulfill our promise to do something about this overcrowding on a permanent basis. So we're grateful for that and thank you to our great Capital Project staff that's and contractors that are getting those new schools built so we can alleviate this overcrowding. Questions or comments? Mr. Mayor?
Just just one comment. I really think that the staffs of these three schools went up and beyond the call of duty. I mean, because when you have three different staff meetings and when you're trying to coordinate track, what should be learned at a different grade and one teacher's gone, it makes you, it makes it tough. And I, and they've, I've never heard a whimper from anybody out there that says, oh, this is terrible, get me off of this or I'm going to quit. You know, they've taken the bull by the horns and they've made a success out of a not successful type of environment with the. type of environment with the multi-track. And I think from everybody that's connected to these three schools, they should be congratulated and thanked from the bottom of our hearts for the job well done.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. We have some public comments on this, and we have some of our principals here. And you'd be, you know, Mr. Verdi, we'd welcome your comments as well if you want. Go ahead, JJ.
Jennifer Anderson.
Ms. Anderson, welcome.
I'm Jennifer Anderson. I am the owner of Just Kidding Learning Center. We offer before and after-school care to school-aged children. We also offer off-track and school-break programs for four elementary schools in our area, one of which is Spanish Springs Elementary. Out of the four schools, we provide transportation and care for. Spanish Springs is the only on multi-track. I want to speak in favor of transitioning Spanish Springs Elementary School to the balanced calendar. There's a never-ending list of examples of how multi-track has impacted our business and families, but I'm going to highlight just a couple of challenges that have occurred just this month alone. There was no mention of conference week on the Spanish Springs multi-track calendar. Therefore, the director of our school contacted the office staff at the elementary school one month prior to conference week for the schools on the balanced calendar. The office staff stated they had no idea when conference week was. The director requested a call back when she found out. A couple of weeks went by without a return call, prompting her to make a second call. She was provided a list of days and times for conference week, which she read back to the office staff and confirmed. The director inquired about Election Day at this time and was told by office staff, "Of course, we are closed." During conference week for Purple Track, which followed the other tracks, our driver noted that there were only 22 children lined up for five school buses. We were informed by the office staff that conference week ended on Wednesday for Purple Track, yet it actually continued through the week until Friday. We were given inaccurate information, causing us not to be at the school at the correct time. There was also another parent in the office at the same time that was given the same information. In regards to Election Day, the Spanish Springs calendar showed the school to be open for Election Day. Following the confusion with conference week, the director called the school again and was told at this time that the school would be open for Election Day. On November 5th, I received a notice home with my child, who attends Alice Taylor, a school on the balanced calendar, that stated that all Washoe County schools in the district will be closed. There will be no school that day. However, Spanish Springs Elementary was actually open for school that day. On November 7th, I spoke with Charles in the Communication Department with Washoe County School District. I started with discussing Election Day, and I stated I received notification from Alice Taylor stating all Washoe County schools are closed on Election Day. He stated, "That's correct." It was at this time that I mentioned Spanish Springs was actually open, and upon looking at the calendar, he noted they were open. Then we discussed conference week. He also noticed it was not on the calendar. This is the district's own Communication Department that's unaware of the inaccuracies within their own system. These are just two of an endless number of times multi-track has led to confusion for parents in the community involving and caring for children attending Spanish Springs Elementary. I wanted to highlight the burden of inconsistencies of the school district when attempting to juggle multi-track and balanced calendar schools. Even the school district and school office staff are often-
Finish your thought.
Okay, sorry. Essentially, it just provides lots of logistical challenges to parents, teachers, staff, the admin staff. There's tons of extra costs, the busing, the transportation, admin costs, utilities alone. So I'm very happy to see it on the schedule today, and I am for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. And thank you for enduring all of that over the past period of time we've been on the multi-track year-round. And apologies for the communication breakdowns. I know none of us want to have that happen, and I know that was hard on your staff as well. So thanks.
And I would ask, if this is approved, that you guys really work hard to help us with the transition from one to the other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mulia Pakta?
Is it Ms. Pakta?
Pakta.
Okay.
Yes.
Pakta, okay. Welcome.
So I'm kind of on the fence. I'm not really a big fan of multi-track. I've got currently two daughters at Spanish Springs. My oldest daughter just started this year at Shaw. So last year, multi-track was amazing. I had all my kids off for a whole month. We could go and do vacation things when not the whole world was at the vacation spots. This year, having kids on different schedules has posed some, not nightmares, but difficulties. When my kids tracked off for November, my oldest daughter was still in school, and so I had to make a judgment call. As a parent, looking at our calendars, we don't really have much family time where we are all together. And so I made the decision to pull her out of school for a few days, my oldest daughter, so that we could have some family time. So for that, I'm not really in favor of keeping the multi-track. On the flip side, I am in favor of keeping the multi-track, because I've been there when there are 800 kids trying to go to school. Still, drop-off and pickup is a nightmare at best. I'm concerned about the enrollment numbers, because we've been told that there are approximately 140 students that are zoned for Spanish Springs, that are not currently going to Spanish Springs. They're attending school at a different school in the district. I don't know that that accounts for the parents who have taken their kids out of the district and put them in private schools or whatever other options exist. I understand that this is inconvenient, and it causes a hardship for businesses and for families, but the safety and the education of our children is paramount. This is a school district. We are charged with educating our children and making sure that they're not getting run over when they're crossing the street. I've heard of several close calls in front of our school and in front of other schools. I myself, my middle daughter, not last school year, but the prior year, was almost hit. It was about 18 inches, the bumper, from my child while she was crossing in front of the school in the crosswalk. Also, the new, it seems like you're taking the numbers and including the new elementary school being built. The last zoning committee meeting that I attended, the zoning for the new elementary school, the only relief it provided for Spanish Springs was in the area where they're building the new Toll Brothers communities, and those kids aren't even going to our school yet. So I don't know that it's an accurate representation of the enrollment numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Pakta.
Thank you.
If I may take-
Yes, mister.
You know, I want to just thank this young lady for her involvement. When Dr. Feimster and I went out to meet your trustees at Shaw, she was there. She calls, she's involved in the school, and I think she's a good example of what a parent should be. Because she's involved with her kids' education and strives to get a good education for them. So I just want to thank you for being the person that you are.
That's very nice, very nice. And hopefully, in addition to the new elementary school in Kylie Ranch, which you mentioned, Ms. Pakta, we also have the Sky Ranch Middle School will be opening, and we'll be shifting some sixth graders. So hopefully, we'll be able to experience some great improvements in the overcrowding at Spanish Spring. That is the plan, and that's why this is being brought forward. We also are very concerned about the safety issues that you've mentioned. And I know we just received a report on some of the priorities for safe routes to schools that we want to be talking about with the local jurisdictions, and I recall that may be one of them. So thank you. Other comments and questions from the board? Any from the telephone board members? And principals, this is your last shot, if you want to say anything? Anything? Okay. We know it's a big transition for everybody. And again, we appreciate how hard everyone has worked to make it work along the way. I would entertain a motion. Trustee Kelly?
I'd like to make the motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Frankel.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the transition of Alice Smith Elementary School, Spanish Springs Elementary School, and Double Diamond Elementary School from the multi-track year-round calendar to the balanced calendar, beginning with the 2019-20 school year.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by trustee Frankel, and a second by trustee Dr. Taylor.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor? Did we get you?
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay, all right. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. And again, please thank the staffs, the families, everybody who has been involved in helping us to make this work. We are now on to item 4.09, which is Presentation and Possible Action to Review the Rising Star Classification of Encompass Academy Charter High School. We have Dr. Krista McNeil, we have David Lasik, Chief of Staff, and Stacy Cooper, Coordinator of Charter Oversight. Welcome. And we have a train going by, so anything could happen.
Very true.
Of course, of course. Our railroader.
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you, trustees. With me, as you mentioned, Dr. McNeil and Stacy Cooper, our Coordinator of Charter Schools, our charter school liaison. So I will quickly turn it over to Stacy, who will walk us through each scenario for each of the schools with our recommendations.
Good evening, President Holland, members of the Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. For the record, my name is Stacy Cooper, and I serve as the Coordinator or the Charter Liaison for Washoe County School District. This presentation may seem in some parts as repetitive. As if you recall, many of you that were here in the spring, I had given a comprehensive overview of our charter performance for the school year. So some of these slides are going to be repetitive. So just like President Holland, I might speak a little too fast, but I apologize. So we're here today to bring before you Encompass Academy, which has been designated this year as a Rising Star School by the State Department of Education. Encompass Academy Charter High School, their renewal is coming up this coming June, so you will see Encompass in June for their renewal. They currently serve grades nine through 12. They offer a specialty in education, whereby serving a diverse learning spectrum for our students in Washoe County in a small classroom structure with externships and community connection opportunities. The annual performance review findings this last June for Encompass Academy, all areas were compliant. Outstanding performance with Encompass Academy this year with all the areas of compliance. And as a result, they were one of our few charter schools that went with all areas checked as green for compliant. Encompass is on a probationary three-year renewal cycle, so like I said, you will see them this coming June for their renewal. Some current data trends. They are a Rising Star School, which means they are considered a one-star school in the state of Nevada. The predominant area of concern is because they have been exhibiting an under-67% graduation rate consistently for a period of about three to five years. However, it is conflicting data, because our Student Accountability Office says it's difficult to ascertain and track student growth data when we've had inconsistent data measures for our high school students. So this is a data opportunity to share with you, that their enrollment from 2016 was originally 84. They've grown in their school capacity to currently 101 students. Their graduation rate back in 2016 and '17 school year was only 28%. They've grown that graduation rate to 37%, with an anticipated growth at the end of this school year above that. Their credit deficiency in 2016 and '17, 38 students, 38% of the students were needing credit recovery opportunities, where now, they've improved that data, where they only have 20% of their student populations needing credit recovery. Their attendance has also grown, with 86% was the original attendance back in 2016. They've grown in capacity with having a 92% attendance rate at their high school. And the number of our core academic teachers at Encompass Academy in 2016 was six teachers. They currently have five that are regular FTEs, and that reduction in staff is actually a fiscal decision, which most of our schools are going through at this time. So for those of you who have been with us in the district for years, Encompass Academy was originally known as Rain Shadow. They opened in 2003, and they went through a robust turnaround effort that was initiated in 2016. They've persistently underperformed, but like I said, our Student Accountability Office has stated that the official school ratings have fluctuated for high schools over the years, impacting the reliability of that data. Encompass was declared a Rising Star School in 2016, and then again this year in 2018. Encompass graduation rates has consistently been under 60% since 2014. So, members of the board, you all received a Rising Star Notice for our charter schools here in Washoe County School District, and Encompass was one of those two charter schools. The State Department of Education proposed that we either, as one of these bullet items indicate, revoke or terminate our charter school and reassign the students from Encompass throughout the school district, or initiate a process for the school to go through a receivership, where a third-party entity would come in and assist with remediation, turnaround efforts, including planning and transfer of authority. The charter school could opt to seek a transformation partner and opt into consideration of the Nevada Achievement School District. Or lastly, the charter could opt into an alternative performance framework and continue to progress monitor based upon their recent school performance data shared with the NDE. Recent conversations and correspondence with the NDE awarded Encompass the opportunity for that fourth consideration, based on their improvement of their trends. So due to those recent trends towards school improvement and the documented collaboration, Encompass has been working with the Academy of Urban School Leaders, otherwise known as AUSL. The school has demonstrated a dedication towards school improvement that warrants continuation of progress monitoring. And as a result, the superintendent recommends that Encompass Academy Charter High School pursue the alternative performance framework, and that Washoe County School District continue to serve as the monitor and liaison for that progress monitoring. I want to let you know that the principal, Toby Wiedemeyer, is here to address any questions you may have this evening regarding current trends, student growth, attendance, behavior, parent involvement, and climate.
Yes, Vice President Raymond, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wondered if you could provide us with some more information about the work with the Academy of Urban School Leaders looks like, and kind of how intensive that work is.
Very intensive, actually. So we-
Our-
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
My apologies. My name is Toby Wiedemeyer. I'm the Principal of Encompass Academy, for the record. So, Academy for Urban School Leadership, we were very drawn to working with this organization out of Chicago, because they do tremendous turnaround programming within the Chicago public school system. And what we've been able to do is, we've actually been able to go to Chicago and tour some of those schools and see what they've done to make the intense turnarounds that they've done within their urban school settings. And so it's actually informed some of our policies and procedures within our school. All of my teachers were able to go to actually see classrooms building, all of that. And then, AUSL actually comes here with their staff. They are working with us on some different tools in terms of how we manage our classroom, how our teachers are delivering instruction, all the way down to, again, the policies and procedures of the school that are going to help propel us forward and put us on the trajectory to be more of a college-going culture. That being said, we still, they recognize that our niche is also working with students that often struggle in a traditional setting. So it's been a really enlightening experience, and some of the changes that have come about of it have drastically improved our behavioral outcomes. We dropped 40% less behavioral referrals last year from the year previous, 65% less suspensions last year from the year previous. There's been some tremendous changes within the culture of our school. 100% of our graduating seniors last year were actually accepted to a college or university afterwards. So we've been working really hard to promote certain changes within the culture. We brought uniforms in. We have a zero-tolerance cell phone policy. There's things like that that we really formalize. that we really formalized with AUSL's help that have helped other areas of our school improve.
Go ahead. Thank you. Just a quick follow-up question, then. Or two, do they specialize in working with charter schools, and is the expense to pay for that work coming out of your general fund budget, or how are you paying for the...
So, it's a twofold thing. So, Chicago is a city of choice, so it's a little bit, even though it's not for charter schools, per se, because they're actually the public schools, like what they call community schools or neighborhood schools there, and there's tremendous competition among all the charters that have come in and other schools that are in. So they're kind of facing the same issues that we face as far as attracting students. So even though it's a little different, they don't specialize in charters, but it kind of works for our model here. As far as the funding for that, we've been fortunate enough to receive the Title 1003A funding the last two years, which has helped us with this turnaround process. And we've been able to also bring in a data coach, a person who's just focused on looking at the numbers, and what can we do, and how can we help to propel how our students are doing in school and in classes.
Thank you. David Lasik, Chief of Staff, for the record. And if you recall, we presented to you all the similar work going on with our schools. So it's just a different vendor, but similar process. Our partner was Partners in School Innovations and Solution Tree. They just have a different partner on the state-approved list doing similar work.
And congratulations on the improvement in the graduation rate, and the credit deficiency numbers, and attendance here. It really shows that good work is being done, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
I have some questions. What's the transity rate of both the students and the teachers?
So for students, so to give you an idea, we were up a lot more significantly than we were last year and this year. This year, we've had seven withdrawals up to this point, whereas in years previous to that, you were looking at in the course of a year, maybe 60, 70 over the course of the year in terms of transiency. We're stabilizing, is what we're finding.
So you're down to seven so far, and that's almost half a year.
That's right.
So 14 compared to 60.
Right. And last year, we had dropped from, so the first year since the transition in 1617, we had about 60-some that were withdrawn. Last year, we were down to more like 30-some. Right now, we're at seven for the year. So we're on the right, I would say, on the right trajectory. And like I said, we'll stabilize more the more we grow our freshman class. In the past, we've been taking a lot of students in later when they're already credit deficient, and those tended to be more transient. We still will take those students and provide support, but we also want to have a stable base, so that's our focus.
How about teachers?
So teachers have been stable for a very long time. So we've had the same teachers through the transition. One of our former teachers actually passed away about a week ago, and so she wasn't able to make the transition with us, which maybe many of you know who that is. But, you know, so that's been the only change since we relocated. And then we did bring in an additional teacher, because one of our current teachers moved to the position of data coach. So we've really been pretty stable. Most have been with us at least five years.
No divorces amongst the faculty, they all are happy, huh?
Well, who knows?
No, because you used to go through lots of teachers.
Not too terrible. Usually around five years would be kind of pretty standard, really. And we lost a bunch at one time, they all moved to Oregon at one point, and we joked they were starting another school, but...
Because when I first got on the board eight years ago, you were really having problems with teachers going into our schools.
Oh, okay.
When it was Rain Shadow.
Yeah. So, and at that point, I still was the dean position, so that's possible, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Cooper, you had something to add?
I just wanted to reinforce what Toby had stated, in that one of the complications we see commonly at our charter high schools is that students come from the zoned high schools, and come to the smaller charter schools in order to engage in credit recovery opportunities. And once they have achieved the credit recovery, and it's ready to graduate, we see a tendency of some of those kids transitioning back to their zoned schools to graduate with the peers. So it's really a good thing to see Encompass identifying their own climate, culture, and identity, so that they're retaining the students all the way through graduation.
Great. Dr. Feimster?
Yeah, you mentioned your suspension rate was 67%?
It was decreased by 65% last year, yeah.
And that's great. So what do you attribute that to? There has to be something.
So we have a pretty, we have a lot of gatekeepers in place. We also, you know, do a lot of coaching and counseling of students all the time. We're very much a family. In 2015-16, we had 124 suspensions. Currently this year, I have seven, again. So no fights on campus, none of that. So we have really done a lot, we do a lot of very intensive intake process that kind of follows some of the models of Ruby Payne, Bridges Out of Poverty, and looking at, because a lot of my students are kind of living moment-to-moment. So just working with them to plan out, visualize their future, and we use that model to carry through throughout their high school experience, and remind a lot of students, hey, your behavior is that in alignment with what you said your goals were, that you set with me. So, and they do that with a parent and with myself, pretty much every student that comes in. And I think having those really intense conversations, knowing that we're in an environment where we're going to work through some of that, has really improved a lot of things. We also got uniforms, I have to tell you, that's been a help. And the zero-tolerance cellphone policy has been a big help. So both of those things have been crucial to seeing some changes occur, especially in the behavioral end. It's not perfect, but it's improving.
That's great.
Yeah.
Very good. Other questions? Yes, Ms. Champion?
I was just wondering how the zero-tolerance cellphone policy helped with behavior, because I think that's kind of interesting.
Well, I think that many of the students, my experience has demonstrated that a lot of students are having that dangling conversation all the time, and it's coming, was coming with them into classes. And when you have a small environment that can rally as quickly as my 100 students can rally, everybody knows everything. And so we really decided that we needed to retain the focus on the teacher, and the classroom environment, and live in that moment. And so as a result, I mean, kids, if they are walking class-to-class with their phone out, it goes to the office for the day. They are not to have it at any time besides during lunch. And the reason that we've done that again is, we felt that many of them coming from previous schools were not successful, not focused on being a student, and it was getting in the way, it was one more distraction. And so I don't know for certain, but I would argue that it has created a lot less drama in our school environment.
Other questions? Good question. Trustees on the phone, any questions? I'll take that as a no. Any public comment? Okay, would a trustee like to make a motion? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to move that Encompass Academy Charter High School pursue the alternative performance framework, and Washoe County School District to continue to monitor progress.
Oh, sorry, Trustee Frankel, Trustee Feimster beat you to it, sorry. Motion by trustee mayor, second by Dr. Feimster. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, and we'll see you again.
Yes, you will, very soon.
Thank you for the good progress.
Thank you.
Okay, item 4.10, Presentation to Review the Monitoring Progress of I Can Do Anything Charter High School, and our same team, Dr. McNeil, David Lasik, and Stacy Cooper.
Hi, and good evening, once again. For the record, my name is Stacy Cooper, and I thank you for having us here today. We are here today to give you a comprehensive update to the performance indicators for I Can Do Anything Charter High School, as well as to address updates pertaining to the areas of noncompliance that were articulated to you all in the spring, and to give you the proposed areas of sanction that have been provided to us by the Nevada Department of Education for the Rising Star Correspondence. And just like I had stated earlier, I Can Do Anything Charter High School, some of these slides are going to seem familiar to you, because it is a replication of last spring, so that it's easy for you to see and identify the areas of noncompliance, and then to receive an update to the progress. As you all are aware, I Can Do Anything Charter High School, they are up for renewal this coming year in June, if things maintain the trajectory of where we're heading at this time. They currently serve grades nine through 12. Their specialty area is performing arts and multimedia, and they are growing a capacity in the career tech phase of robotics. They have an annual performance review finding, this last year was minimally compliant. Out of the 38 areas reviewed, there were four areas of concern of noncompliance. One, which was a compounded two-area concern in their financial solvency. ICDAs on a probationary three-year renewal cycle, so they are up for renewal this next June. I Can Do Anything's charter data at a snapshot, very similar to what we just went through with Encompass Academy. Their enrollment in 2016 was at 228 students. Their current enrollment, actual data as of the end of October, was 197. Their graduation rate in 2016 was at 24%, and in the 2017-18 school year, it was at 31%. We broke down their credit deficiency into three grade levels of area for you. In the 10th grade, we were at 45%, and we reduced that deficiency to 36%. In the 11th grade in 2016, we were at 48% credit deficient, and in 2017 and 18, we reduced that to 35%. We did see an area of decline in our 12th grade in 2016, they were at 20% credit deficiency, and we have seen an increase in that in the 2017-18 school year, with a 29% deficiency rate. Their number of teachers back in 2016 were 12, and they currently have eight core academic teachers under FTE. As you all are aware, I Can Do Anything Charter High School is the oldest-running charter school in the state of Nevada, so they do have a lot of historic impact. I Can Do Anything has persistently underperformed, maintaining a one-star rating since 2012, but like I said, for Encompass, school ratings have fluctuated for the high schools over the years, which does impact its reliability. I Can Do Anything was declared a Rising Star School in 2016, and was given the opportunity for progress monitoring for three years. And as a result, I Can Do Anything's graduation rates have been consistently under the 60% mark since 2012. Back in the spring, we came forward with some areas of concern of noncompliance in our charter annual performance review. Our first area of noncompliance was in the financial realm for ICDAs. Our financial review revealed that the school had not complied with the generally-accepted standards of fiscal management with negative cash flow balance and a year-to-date deficit as of March 31st. In addition, due to student enrollment decline, there was a projected deficit at the year end greater than the school's fund balance, which was putting ICDAs in a red negative cash flow. So our update to this area of noncompliance, they did set their budget this year at 180 students, and as of the end of October, their enrollment does maintain at 197, so that gives them a positive flow of approximately 17 students. The additional monies from the 17 students are being set aside to pay previous month's debts, so they are still generating a negative revenue. The principal took a $25,000 pay reduction. They were able to successfully reduce their rent by $5,000 per month, and they are under further negotiations to reduce the rent even further. Their school is located out in the growing Warehouse District, out by Edison Way on Corporate Boulevard. Staff reductions did occur, resulting in four teachers being rifled this last spring and this fall. Our area of compliance, number two, was that ICDAs Charter High School had a graduation rate immediately preceding the school year that was less than 60%. ICDAs failed to show academic growth and progress, impacting the general educational welfare for their students. And that is an area of NRS that does give us the authority, if we saw fit, to immediately recommend school closure. However, our updates to this area of noncompliance, ICDAs issued a Rising Star Notification in 2016. They were placed on a three-year progress monitoring plan, and then they received a subsequent notice again this year for the same area of deficiency from the state. They have improved their graduation rates from 24% to 31%. This is short of the 67% state expectation, but they are growing. ICDAs partnering with the Academy of Urban School Leaders, just like Encompass Academy, and they are assisting the school in closing those achievement gaps for their students. The area of noncompliance that was articulated in the spring, number three, I had shared with you all that the Health Department inspection revealed that there was an area of noncompliance in their food preparation. As a result, I Can Do Anything dropped the menu service plan with Washoe County School District, and elected to conduct their own private food service. ICDAs was asked to submit their food plan to the Washoe County School District, as well as the Health Department, and they needed to align their food preparation standards with the Department of Agriculture Food Health Guidelines. A corrective action plan was submitted, although the food service procedures have yet to be reevaluated by the Health Department as of the submission of this presentation. So our updates as of today in this area of noncompliance, as of 11/18, the Health Department updates were received, however, they were reduced from a school preparation food facility to a snack bar facility. That does deviate slightly for ICDAs, because they don't have to prepare their foods, but they do still have to maintain accordance to the Department of Agriculture's food guidelines. The school does not heat and serve food to their students daily due to the previous year's report. They do secure private catering, or did, and it ceased to operate, so the school is currently pursuing private options to fund their snack bar items, and they are permitted to do that under the Health Department guidelines. The school has been designated by the Health Department as a snack bar establishment, and the school does not receive funding for their food programming. The last area of noncompliance that was shared with you this last spring, noncompliance number four, the Office of Charter School Oversight did not have a listing of all the current board members and their qualifications per NRS. A corrective action plan was submitted by the school, and on May 21, ICDAs did communicate that they had a complete board, but did not have a quorum to conduct school business. ICDAs enacted a plan to recruit and fill the vacancies, and as of June 1, 2018, a complete list of governing board members and their affidavits were not on file with our office. So our updates to this area of noncompliance, as of November 13, the charter liaison has received two, now three, affidavits for their board members. The remaining board member credentials have not yet been received, so I do have affidavits for three of the four board members, I do not have resumes for any of them. The board agendas and the minutes are being submitted in accordance to NRS, which was an area of concern that has been remedied. So that brings us to our Rising Star Correspondence that was received from the state. By NRS, it states that the sponsor, which is us, Washoe County School District, may reconstitute or revoke a charter if the charter fails to comply with generally-accepted practices of fiscal management, or if they have persistently underperformed, or if they are a potential risk to the welfare of the school community, or has a graduation rate of less than 60% in the preceding year, and pupil achievement and the school performance is unsatisfactory. So their letter for Rising Star was slightly different than Encompass. Their letter gave us three options for consideration. Washoe County School District can revoke or terminate the charter contract and reassign the students throughout the school district at the conclusion of this school year. Washoe County School District can initiate a process of school receivership with a third-party entity to manage the remediation, planning, and transfer of the authority to an educational or charter management organization. Or the charter school could opt to seek a transformation partner, and opt into consideration by the Nevada Achievement School District. I want to refer that option number two, the third-party entity for going into a receivership is a cost obligation to the school, not to the sponsor, and that is a very cost-prohibitive option for ICDAs. So we didn't see that as an area of amicable choice. The third area is the transformation partner, transitioning the... The third area is the transformation partner, transitioning the school into the Nevada Achievement School District. That's a very robust consideration, which would allow the school to opt into, not us forcing them, but they would opt into this consideration and then would be placed under the Nevada Achievement School District. Correspondence and communication, this is a lengthy process and could potentially prolong ICDAs' ability to transition and continue to be successful. Last, we had heard there was about a two-year waiting list to get that transition complete for the school. So our action steps is due to the history of underperformance, financial uncertainty, and concern for the educational welfare of our students at ICDAs, the superintendent directed our staff to issue a 30-day public notice of potential closure to ICDAs. That was actually sent out last week and was hand-delivered to the school as well as mail. What that means is that ICDAs has 30 days to show remedy of all areas of concern prior to our December 11 board meeting, at which we had originally discussed this last spring would be the date that we bring all the updates to you, and you would make a decision regarding the future viability of ICDAs. So we will be coming back to you on December 11 to determine closure considerations and to discuss in greater detail the options that are at hand. This is an information-only presentation. So what does it mean?
Have you heard anything back from them in response to that notice?
They are here today, and at the conclusion of my presentation, there are board members, the school principal, and the financial bookkeeper of the school are here to address any questions. So NRS 388A300 basically states that before the sponsor revokes a written charter or terminates a charter contract, they must provide a written notice of its intention to the governing body of the charter school. The written notice must include a statement of all of our deficiencies, prescribe a period to rectify the deficiencies, not less than 30 days, and prescribe the date on which the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees will hold a public hearing to consider whether to revoke the charter contract, and that is what we have done as of this last So a lot of you are probably asking, oh, wow, what will that transition look like if we were to move in this direction? There's very clear articulation in NRS to the obligations and requirements of us as a sponsor, as well as the charter school, in the event we were to head in that direction. NRS 388A303 outlines the expectations for the sponsor in the event of a charter closure. It does include a support plan for families, handling of school records, assisting the school with all accountability measures such as financial audits and et cetera, so no worries. It's very detailed. It also outlines the expectations of the charter in the event of a charter closure. This does include a communications plan to our families impacted by the closure. It does include closure of contracts associated with the school, termination of lease obligations, et cetera, et cetera. And an appointee would be designated by the sponsor to work with both entities during the closure phase. That would more than likely be my role as the charter liaison, because I am the unbiased entity between Washoe County School District and I Can Do Anything Charter High. We also partner with the National Association of Charter School Authorizers as the state of Nevada and independently here in Washoe County School District. They have provided us with a strategic plan in the past, of which I did share with the Board of Trustee members back in 2016 for Rain Shadow. Obviously, we didn't have to use it, but we do have that strategic plan in place, and we are looking to replicate that template if we needed to do so for ICDAs. In December, Washoe County School District councilors would intend to meet with impacted students and their families to ensure smooth transition into the area schools, and I ensure you that a copy of that strategic plan will be provided to you in anticipation of the December 11 board meeting, so that you can be fully informed to what that plan towards transition may look like in the event that we were to vote for closure. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Dawn Gilmore. She's the president, the principal of I Can Do Anything Charter High School, Darcie Burton, who is the bookkeeper for ICDAs Charter High School, and a member of their board, Harlene Shepherd.
Welcome. Welcome, all of you. Do you have some remarks or thoughts you'd like to share with us before we have any comments from board members?
A few areas of consideration is that...
Could you identify yourself for the record, too?
Dawn Gilmore-Reed, principal of I Can Do Anything Charter High School. In the area of credit deficiency, that increase of 8% is one student, so I just wanted to bring that out. When you're looking at data for a small school, it may feel like it's a huge group of students, but it may just be one, and so please take that into consideration when you're considering the data here. Another thing to consider while you...I know it would not be an easy choice for the Washoe County School District to open the first charter that they began to sponsor, but we also recognize that every school has their responsibility to ensure that they're providing academic, the academic needs of all students, and there are few students in schools that meet more than...we approach it in a different way, and keeping an environment small is important to our particular school. Please keep in mind that as you relocate students, 75% of our population has attended one-star or low-performing elementary schools, and they're working their way through. Many of our students, at least 50% of our population, has attended more than one elementary school and more than one junior high school. Those are all things to take into consideration when you begin to move students around. We have addressed this, and we have been forthcoming with our parents. We announced what we had discussed earlier in the year with our parents at an orientation and asked them to please prepare. Our biggest concern, and one of the things that we need to look at, is the fiscal standing, because we rely solely on DSA funding, which comes down to about $4.80 an hour per student. It is impossible when you know everyone you employ makes more than that an hour, so it is a difficult scenario. If you are lucky enough to have a partnership, a nonprofit partnership, to help you do some fundraising, which we are currently seeking individuals or organizations that would like to fundraise and partner with us, that would help us in our fundraising area as well. As far the food services, we are doing our best. Our students have a lot of say in what we're serving, but they are not complaining, and we do have our meals catered. We are not having to follow some of the nutritional guidelines, because we are not taking federal funds for our program and currently spend approximately $1,500 a month feeding 40 students, a maximum of 40 students a day. So we're making great efforts, and we do have some donations that are in place, but it generally isn't going to go over about $2,500 in order to meet the needs. When we lost the ability to partner with the district and utilize the kitchen, one of the other schools kitchens, it really did have also a fiscal impact on the school, because we couldn't retrofit our building and our kitchen to meet the guidelines of being a part of the free and reduced lunch program. And we're currently working, as you can see, last year at this time, we were at about 176. We are at 179, and we are in an upward trend. Our graduation rate for this year should be about 37%, so again, another increase. We've decreased our absenteeism by about nine, our chronic absenteeism school-wide by 9%. All areas, there are all areas of improvement. We're currently, we currently have the board member here, and we do have a copy of her affidavit, but we haven't handed that over to you yet, I apologize, as well as everyone's resumes, to show that they're qualified for the positions on the board. And this is Harlene Shepherd, also our board member and committee leader for our financials. And as you know, Darcie Burton, and I'm going to back away and let you ask them questions related to the fiscal element of this.
Thank you, Ms. Gilmore-Reed. Welcome. Any questions specifically? Actually, Darlene, before you sit down or get too comfortable there, I did have a question for you. So what do you think the impact is on your students if this school isn't able to survive?
We've kind of informally been surveying them, because it's a real conversation. They've chosen to stay, and we still are enrolling students who are looking to graduate this year. And the students' feedback to me at this point is maybe 25% would go back to their zone school, and 25% might look at a charter, but a lot of students will probably just be done with it.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any questions, trustee Frankel or trustee Dr. Taylor?
Actually, I do, Madam President.
Yeah, please go ahead.
I was wondering from the staff that there, what can you expect in terms of complying with the request of the district for paperwork and reports and so on like that?
Ms. Cooper, I think she's referring to our staff.
Just for clarification, trustee...
No, I was actually, I was actually referring to their staff.
Oh, okay. Well, they're here. They can answer responsiveness to our requests for paperwork and that sort of thing. Can you clarify again? We have a lot of puzzled faces here, trustee Taylor.
Okay, I'm sorry. In terms of the information on board members, some of the requirements that have not been made, Ms. Cooper made her report to us, she shared a lot of some of those requirements that have not yet been made and followed up on, and I'd like to just have an idea of what's their time period, is there a plan to make sure that those things are happening more judiciously and so on? Is that more clear?
Yes, it is. Actually, step number one is going to be replace a staff member that is responsible in that area and provide training, again, to a new staff member who has shown interested in assisting the board. The board is actually, the board secretary is going to begin handling and dealing with all of those paper, all of that paperwork to make sure it's completed in a timely manner.
Okay. Does that answer your question adequately, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Dr. Feimster and then Mr. Mayor.
I'm just wondering how many board members have spent time at ICDAs school and actually know the students who are there? I'm just wondering.
I've been there, but I can't say that I know the students that are there.
But she means their board members?
No, I think she means us.
Our board members. I ask the question because I know the students that you guys have. I know those students, and I think what your numbers that you presented would probably, I would differ. I would imagine that probably 50% would just go away like that. And we're in the business of saving students, one at a time, one at a time. These are the most challenging students we have, and the situations that, their environments are not even conducive to even coming to school every day. I've been there. I've sat across the street and just watched, and it's just so dear to my heart, because it was highly successful when it first opened, and it was the answer to the prayer for many high school principals who did not know what to do with some of our students, but that placement made a difference. And I would just like to see if we could do something. I would like to see if we could do something. I believe in saving students, and I, again, I know that 50% of those students will, that's just my guess, and that's only through experience. I know the type of students that you have, and I just wish that everyone knew the backgrounds and the hardships that the students face, because it does make a difference with what we're going to do.
Well, and again, today is not an action item, so...Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Dr. Feimster.
You know, you've got all these choices. Which one of those choices do you think apropos to your situation? The opting out or...
We are currently discussing it with several different stakeholders and different groups first before, and then we will all come together. We've already had conversations with the Nevada Department of Education regarding our opting into the Achievement District, and it is something that we, too, are under consideration for. It's not, it's an opt-in. It's not a suggestion, so if we choose to do that, it would be probably the direction that we can go. The fiscal portion of what we're dealing with right now, I have just learned some new information related to the owner of the building, which may, I don't know which direction certain things are going to go, but we are in conversation. And again, that lease that was negotiated, which we didn't have a part in that lease is what we're kind of working around, and getting to the end of that lease is our goal. But in the interim, please don't negate all of the work and the turnaround. The students have made decisions. I don't know if you were able to see them in the Veterans Parade, and the outreach that is currently increasing at our school, our new FBLA program, when the students are going to Las Vegas and participating on a daily basis, increasing the CTE programs at the school is also an area that we've been working on, and one of the reasons we're seeing an increase in graduation rate, increase in even 11th graders that came in to possibly graduate early, who said, you know, I think I would like to have an advanced diploma and the increase in children and students taking trigonometry, pre-calculus, and chemistry. Those are some of the things that we're not talking about, that this data doesn't make space for, and the number of students who actually are enrolling in college and taking college classes before they're done with us, but may not ask for a dual credit.
Have you ever, we had a presentation from, what are they, the, you know, the labor union tennis programs. Have you ever thought of looking at starting one of those for career education for these kids?
We are open to what the students are open to.
You know, I'd like...
So a presentation for families and students, I think, would be great at the school, if we brought them all together.
Yeah. I'd like to see you at least try to find out what's available to you between now and the December 11, so you can say, well, we've looked at this, we've looked at that, this is, this is okay, but this won't work, because as it stands right now, it's kind of foggy, in my opinion. There's no, no set direction, and there should be one.
Other questions? Oh, yes, Mr. Lasik.
Thank you, David Lasik. I just want to provide some context. As Ms. Cooper outlined, the NDE did give us different options for the school versus Encompass, and as we look to renew the charter coming up, it's for a six-year period, so the law changed, whereas previously we were able to renew the school for three years on a probationary status, we don't have that option going forward. So when we look to renew the charter status, we're looking to renew it for six years. It's a long time to renew a school that's consistently underperforming, and is two-thirds of the school is not graduating, and I think that's not very good. I will also add that continuing their charter as outlined by the NDE puts us in jeopardy of our, as a district, and losing our ability to have sponsor schools as a whole. So by continuing and keeping this school going does jeopardize the rest of our charter
And Stacy Cooper, for the record, just to follow up with what Mr. Lasik just stated, the Achievement School District is a very robust option, and I didn't get into detail, and I think you need to understand that if that were to be an opt-in option, the entire charter school is dismantled. charter school is dismantled. And the Achievement School District has the authority to determine whether it's even worthwhile to reinvigorate with a new board. So that is a very, it's a harsh consideration. So we are looking at very grave options ahead, and we need to look at these, just like you said, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Feimster, we need to look at every angle. As the charter liaison, my role is to support the charter school, support their families and their students, but also maintain the integrity of the professional services that we offer as a sponsor. So moving forward, I want to make sure that the board is very clear that Dawn and I have done an exceptional job, and her staff, at being very transparent with her families and students. We have positioned, and we have counselors and principals in place that are ready to do transcript audits, confer, consult, and counsel families, even if those families decide to stay with ICDA. That's what we do. That's what this family-focused, every child-focused intent is about.
Dr. McNeil?
I'll just reiterate, our high school principals are standing ready. They have been basically placed on notice, and their schools are open and very accepting with meeting with our counselors, the transcript reviews. They know a lot of ICDA students need and deserve the very best education, and so I just want to go on record as saying our high school principals are standing ready to support in any way, shape, or form.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
You know, I don't know, but at the Dairy Queen, a kid working, was working at the Dairy Queen, and he checked out of Sparks High, and he went to I Can Do Anything High School, and he told me that he's graduating in December, coming from Sparks High to you. Is that true?
Yes.
They can come in anytime. He doesn't go to your school physically, but he's on the computer, and he can graduate in December.
Correct.
And so a lot of these kids that you have right now, if they start working on the computer, they could possibly graduate early then.
Some of them can. It depends on where they're at with their credits.
Because that kid's a hard worker, so I know he goes home probably and does the work on the computer, because he's, he tells me he's got it almost all done, and he'll be graduating in December.
It is likely. We have several students that work more than one job, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Lasik?
Yeah, I just want to add context to that. So we received five of their students who did not graduate on our cohort.
Madam President? Yes. Who, the students who live in the Boys Home on Pyramid Highway, where do they go?
They attend, we provide a curriculum.
And how many students would that entail?
Eight.
Eight?
It varies, between six and eight usually, six, maybe nine.
Okay. So we would handle those guys. Okay, and we know what students, we know these students.
They would go through a transcript review? I mean, that's really important to find out, first of all, where the student is, what credits they have, and the counselors would take care of that?
They're challenging. They're in a group home, that's, that's, and I believe they're mostly.
And our comprehensive high schools have students in those same type of situations?
Any questions, trustee Frankel or trustee Taylor, that have not yet been asked or answered?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
For superintendent.
I appreciate the conversation, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you.
What would it take to change your mind?
So we are definitely in the business of all kids, and historically, this, as you know, is not the first time that I have actually proposed closure. And we've had a discussion about, okay, let's do another round. The challenge I have is the six years, right? Because that means six years, and I know that the graduation went up, rate did go up, but it's tricky, because our cohort rate actually went down because of transfer of kids, and I don't want to get into that, because we should support all kids, but we need to have a balance, because there's no system for us to help you, because you're a charter school. I mean, there's systems, but like, we track our kids, and then we get a cohort of kids that we're like, well, what are these things in place? And it's consistent, so it's not one year, it's not two year, this is over time, and we have a responsibility to put all kids, like, in the best place they can be successful. And I'm not saying that the district is always the best place, like, you know, and I appreciate the work that you do, you come into our professional development with our principals, working really hard, so I know that. But there's still the final line of the data and what happens to kids, and are we okay with that as a system for the next six years without a guarantee? It could be great, or it could be consistent with the past, and that's where my challenge lies.
Thank you.
So, so the notice has been issued. We will review this again in December. Do you, do you feel like you could make substantial progress by December with your plans and things that you are working on? There's a lot here that is, that hasn't changed.
If your focus is on graduation rate, that's going to be about 37 percent, and again, is an increase. What we don't do, and what we don't get credit for, is we don't get credit for students getting adult diplomas. We don't get credit for students who complete a high set and then earn credit that way and then get a diploma. That doesn't occur in our school. It is all true work and true class passage. So it puts us on a different, in all actuality, if you look at the alternative framework, I don't think it should have been an option, and I don't think the conversation you had with schools that are small like ours, there were four areas in the framework that we didn't even qualify for points, but you still, but you, but we still stayed in that framework. And that's the framework that's, that's gauging the graduation rate, and whether or not we have all of the services, or we offer the same services as a large 24,000, you know, 2,400 high school, and we're not, we're completely different. We were not, the alternative framework should have been something that not just my school, but Encompass, because it's not weighted, it's not weighted.
And we're familiar with that too, because our innovation school does not get alternative framework, and they are similar to you. So we actually understand that, like, we have schools that look like you, that for whatever reason, the state does not allow that. I don't think we determine the alternative framework, that's determined by the state, because the state did not allow our school to go on that alternative framework either.
I believe when representatives met with us and Encompass, and you'll have to check with Encompass, my interpretation of what I was told was that it would not be a benefit to the students of ICDA, and it would just be us collecting a lot of data. But the school that the district placed in the alternative framework didn't, isn't in that framework, isn't having this conversation right now. Is their, their enrollment is not being threatened by a conversation that's taking place at the school district, when we're showing improvement. I guarantee you, it's going to be a big jump in graduation, but now you're, now our families are doubting. So in the time that we've been able to make changes, but that's my interpretation, is that it wasn't going to be a benefit, it was just going to be us collecting a lot of data. So we opted out so we could focus on academics for students.
Sounds like there's some follow-up conversations offline that would probably be helpful, just so everybody's on the same page with what the, what the history is and what the expectations are. I don't know that we have any more questions. Is there anything else that anyone wants to add? Okay, if not, then we will see you in December, and we hope, and express every confidence that everyone will work together for the right thing for the kids.
Thank you.
For the students that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to board reports. Is there any quick board reports that folks would like to make? I know there were lots of things that folks have been doing activity-wise. We certainly had a great Veterans Day Parade with Mr. Mayor and trustee Kelly and Vice President Raymond and kids, and about 2,000 ROTC, JROTC students. That was pretty impressive. And I appreciated seeing trustee Kelly at the Piccolo School fundraiser with Grant. Anytime there's food, you know, trustee Kelly and Grant will be there at the head of the line.
They pitch a tent outside.
They did. I, I saw Scott, he was elbowing people in the line. No, he wasn't. Vice President Raymond?
Well, I will just do a quick run-through. I really enjoyed the Veterans Day Parade, so did my daughter. Riding on the front of the Hummer was pretty much the highlight, but, and just was able to stop by the eighth grade career fair and spend about an hour wandering around and sat in in some of the sessions. It was incredible, and the amount of information that these students were absorbing while at a frenetic, like, energy level was crazy. I was able to spend about a half a day at Reno High School for their junior interview project, and interviewed, I guess, about eight students, which was really cool, and all of them were very impressive, and I encouraged them all to come and sit through one of our board meetings, so. And I think other than just the regular sort of school visits and other things, that was about it.
Okay, okay. And I also really enjoyed my visit to the area management inspection with the Reed High School, JROTC, and they were very sad that Mr. Mayor was not there, because he's a...
I don't know, I'm going to have to make it up to him.
You are.
Maybe donuts.
You are, something, something, you're going to have to make it up. I also went to the Boys and Girls Club Dinner, went to the Audit Committee, went to the Career Expo, which was wonderful, and, and did 10 school visits, so we've all had a busy fall, and appreciate all the good work everybody's doing. I believe trustee Frankel dropped off. Trustee Taylor, do you have any board report? She may have dropped off as well. Okay?
No, I didn't drop off, but, no, it's getting hard to hear, so I don't need to, no report, I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. And superintendent?
So really fast, a shout-out to school police. As you noticed, Jason is wearing a little beard, but that is for the renowned Children's Hospital fundraiser that they do every year. So super excited about how our school police participates in many activities in the community as a community partner. So kudos to you and your team. I want to know how long that's going to get before, and how much money you're going to raise. And we also do something else later in the spring for them, so thank you, Jason, for that. Once again, Blue Ribbon School is quite a success, and pretty big deal to have two Blue Ribbon Schools. When we were there, people were like, how many schools does Wausau have? And I just kind of smiled, because it's tough enough to get one school, but having two is really kudos to us. In the next couple of weeks, Kristin, Dr. McNeil, deputy, will be starting her shadowing of students and staff, and then next week, I'll kick off my first, which we were doing this, so to be clear, this is not because somebody came to public comment, we had already planned these in the year. I'll kick off my first full-day team teaching in the second grade class.
Wow.
So there won't be any picks, because communications was kicked out of it, but we'll do lunch with the staff, and we'll also do one at every zone over the course of the next four or five months, picking different grade levels to team teach. And thank all of you for our visits together. I know we had tight schedules, and plenty of visits in this first half of the year, but great school visits, and appreciate everything that our staff does for our children, because as you know, in a decade, we are better than we've ever been before.
All right, okay. Are there any future agenda item requests? Okay, not at this time. Is there public comment?
John Appolino?
Welcome back, Mr. Appolino.
Thank you, President Holland. I wanted to follow up on your comments from before about the Infinite Campus data. Where I got my information was from the school district. They sent me an email in September 2017 saying Infinite Campus records were never deleted. Since that time, I've said it in this meeting a few times, and no one's ever said anything, and then today, President Holland blurted out, oh, they are deleted, and we found out during the break that she was halfway right. Some of the Infinite Campus records are deleted, we just found this out today. Some of the Infinite Campus records live forever with Infinite Campus. The issue is every school district in the state of Nevada uploads the most incriminated Infinite Campus records to SANE, which is the Nevada Department of Education's system for accountability and information in Nevada. So it's the medical, psychological, ideas, attitudes, beliefs, that data lives at SANE forever. And I just went through and looked at my email, and the State Department of Ed told me that in February this year, that that data is never deleted. So Infinite Campus deletes some of it, SANE doesn't delete any of it. I emailed you guys that 60 Minutes story from Sunday, and it was actually a parent in incline, ask if you saw it, and I found the link, and the title of the story is Your Data. And I've posted it on our Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children. I don't know if any of you have watched it, but it's much worse for the children than 60 Minutes portrayed on Sunday night. It's bad enough for us, but we're adults, and we're doing all this stuff voluntarily. For the children, one of the things that was mentioned in that story was COPA, laws that are supposed to protect children under 13, but what we know is many of the vendors are not in compliance with COPA, and nothing happens to them. We also know that these free ed tech vendors, that the school district is pressuring children to use, those vendors are paid with student data. We know they create profiles on children, we know when there's a data breach, parents don't have to be notified, and even when those vendors sell the entire company to Chinese, to foreign entities like the Chinese, which has already happened, parents don't have to be notified. This class dojo that's used widely in Wausau County School District is very problematic. Teachers are entering subjective data with a third party, and parents probably have no idea. And there's some other things too, but we don't have, I don't have enough time. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Appolino, and I'm sorry if my communication came across as blurring. I had stated that information to you several months ago, when this came up before, the discussion about Infinite Campus and the six-year timeline. I believe we have that in email, but Mr. Lasik is going to assist in getting source and citation as a reference for that information. Okay, do we have any other public comment? Okay, our next meeting will be after Thanksgiving, on Tuesday, November 27, 2:00 p.m. in this room, so wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and we will be adjourned.